Order the Town of Groton Regular Council Meeting of March 1st, 2022 at 6:33.
The members present, Councilors Bordelon, Bumgarter, Gessary, Franco, Jones, McBride, there he is, hiding behind the podium, Parker, and Westfeld. Everyone's here, sir.
All right, thank you. We have a quorum. Onto our salute to the flag.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Onto recognitions, awards, and memorials under this section. I would just like to have a brief moment of silence for the citizens of Ukraine. Thank you. Thank you. Onto Public Hearings 2022-30 to CDBG 2022 Program Income Reuse Plan Public Hearing.
Groton Town Council Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Groton Town Council will conduct a public hearing on March 1st, 2020, at Groton Senior Center, 102 Newtown Road, Groton, Connecticut, 06340, and Zoom.com to discuss the Community Development Block Grant, better known as CBDG Program Income Reuse Plan, and to solicit citizens' input. The project funded with the CBDG allocations must carry out at least one of the three national objectives: benefit to low and moderate income persons, elimination of slums and blight, or meeting urgent community development needs. The purpose of the public hearing is to obtain citizens' views on the revised Program Income Reuse Plan and to review and discuss the proposed distribution, disbursement of the funds of up to $100,000 as a match to the next CBDG grant application. The Community Development Housing Department, on behalf of the Town of Groton, anticipates applying for the maximum grant of $1,500,000 under the public housing modernization for the Groton Housing Authority. The Town of Groton promotes fair in housing and makes all programs available to low and moderate income families regardless of age, race, color, region, religion, sex, national origin, sexual preference, marital status, or handicap. If you are unable to attend the public hearing, you may direct written comments to the Town of Groton 134 Groton-Lung Point Road, Groton, Connecticut, 06340, or you can make telephone 860-446-5990. Additional information may be obtained at the above address between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. weekdays. All are encouraged to attend. The hearing is accessible to the handicap. Any disabled person requiring special assistance or non-English speaking persons should contact our Human Services Department ADA Coordinator at 860-441-6622 at least five days prior to the hearing. This is an equal opportunity affirmative action, and this was dated on the 15th day of February in the New London Day, and the second required notice was dated the 24th of February in the New London Day.
Thank you. Do we have anyone who signed up to speak at the public hearing?
You want to open the public hearing?
All right. I'll open the public hearing at 6:38.
Natalie Billings. You do have.
On my list I have Natalie Billing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Natalie Billing, 15 Ashby Street, Mystic. I'll be very brief. I'm here as Chair of the Community Development Advisory Committee for the town to speak in favor of your approving the town's plans to use $100,000 of unspent CDBG funds as a match in applying for an additional 1.5 million of CDBG funds. This was discussed with the Community Development Advisory Committee, who support this approach. To me, this is leveraging unspent funds to receive greater funding that will be used to renovate and upgrade 40 existing studio and one-bedroom apartments for low and moderate income seniors and disabled residents of Grasso Gardens 1, operated by the Groton Housing Authority. Such upgrades were done at Pequot Village a few years ago with earlier rounds of CDBG funding. Committee members recently toured both properties to see the difference between the renovated units at Pequot Village and the unrenovated outdated units at Grasso Gardens. The contrast was striking. The Grasso Garden units are in dire need because they're 40 years old and have never been renovated. CDBG funds are expressly available for this purpose. Housing authorities across the country rely on them for renovation projects. Housing authorities, however, cannot apply for the funds. The host town must apply and work in partnership with the housing authority on the renovations. Mr. Frank, Chair of the Groton Housing Authority, couldn't be here tonight, asked that I convey that they very much appreciate the town's cooperation and assistance and understand that these funds in doing this will benefit our lowest-income seniors and disabled, many of whom live on incomes of $10,000 to $20,000. I do hope you'll approve this proposal, and I thank you for your time and your service to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no other people signed up, but would anybody present like to speak? All right, I'm seeing none, so I'll close the public hearing at 6:41. Okay, onto receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. I will make, I'm going to read the little blurb I always read, but I, we have, I think, 20 people signed up, so instead of the normal five minutes, I will have to be restricting to three minutes just for time's sake, but receipt of citizens' petitions is this portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign the sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to three minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councils will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the response to citizens' petitions portion of the meeting. To speak during this portion of the meeting via Zoom, please email council@groton-CT.gov by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. All right, so let me get my list here.
I just wanted to speak in not support of limiting public comment or discussion. I noted it does stated on here, and I know it's the right of the mayor, but I fully believe in this opportunity since it only happens once, and there's no other meetings that they have a chance to speak, so even though that there is 20 on here and you're eliminating to three minutes, other folks may only speak three minutes, some might speak one minute, so I just would not support and encourage the mayor not to limit time for discussion since it's already limited, and that is one of the biggest concerns that people have spoke about, is having the opportunity more frequently so that we don't have large crowds like this if we don't need to, if we had more accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you. First on my list I have Tom Tobin. Just need your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Tom Tobin. I live at 104 Irving Street in Groton, and I would like to say that I don't think it's in the best interests of our town to pass this, to organize this contract with Mr. Quinn until we have further information into his involvement with the Montville Data Center project. At least two newspapers report Mr. Quinn as CEO and President of Verdi Group LLC. Verdi Group was originally organized by the late Joel Green and his wife, Donna Green, as a corporate vehicle to develop a data center in Montville. Verdi Group in turn owned Mohegan Hill, Montville, and Clemen Farms, the owners of the properties for their prospective data center. The Montville project collapsed into at least two litigations. Even though I'm a former attorney, I'll try to cut the legal mumbo jumbo and do this as succinctly as possible. One of the cases, it appears that an entity called All of Us at North lent Verdi Group and the property owners $34 million, secured by a mortgage on the properties and guaranteed by the Greens personally. As part of the deal, this entity, All of Us at North, gained an ownership interest and management of Verdi properties. That entity now seeks to foreclose on the properties. The case is under seal, so it's a little difficult to decipher all the facts. However, in November 2021, lawyers for Mrs. Green, Mr. Green died in the interim, filed a memorandum with the court which sheds some light on the nature of the case and the counterclaims. The memorandum contains numerous allegations about the entity All of Us at North and the new management of Verdi Group, allegations to the effect that All of Us at North, along with the new Verdi Group management, engaged in a takeover attempt of the Montville project through fraudulent dealings and conflicts of interest. Mind you, these are allegations. The memorandum further alleges that All of Us at North, and I quote, "through its principles and/or one of its agents, Thomas Quinn," close quotes, wrongly interfered with the original Verdi Group-established business relationship with the Mashentucket Pequot Tribal Nation concerning data centers." Mr. Quinn has been reluctant to answer questions about his involvement in the Montville project, referring vaguely to his limited role and to a takeover attempt by persons unnamed. But we know Mr. Quinn was an affiliate of GotSpace, and it appears that from this case and another case involving the Montville project, that All of Us at North was affiliated with GotSpace as well.
Thank you.
And we have seen reports that Mr. Quinn was CEO of Verdi Group. The town is entitled to full disclosure about Mr. Quinn's role.
Mr. Tobin, that's three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can submit your comments to the clerk. Next I have Chris Regan. Just need your name and address for the record.
Chris Regan, 20 Finley Way, Stonington, Connecticut. Been a lifelong resident of the area. Grew up in Groton. I am a partner of the New England Edge Group. Regards to the articles and accusations that's being brought up about Mr. Quinn, Mr. Quinn is not part of any lawsuit whatsoever in our area, and the Record Journal of Wallingford retracted a article that basically said that he was involved in lawsuits, and they sent an apology and took it out and changed it. Regards to it, I've been working with Tom Quinn for three and a half years. You know, coming from here to, for Groton, my grandfather came here in 1950 and sat in front of a council talking about a shopping center that he built here in 1952, and that was the first shopping center that was built in this area, and so we're at that cusp right now in regards to a data center. A hyperscale data center does not exist in New England, and this is the opportunity for our town to capitalize on something that will give the generation of students that are here opportunities in IT. And if we don't do this for the town, I have passion about this, and at the end of the day, there's a lot of mistruths that have been talked about, and the taxes that are paid on that property are $30,000 a year, and you're talking about 50 times that. It's $1.5 million to the town, and that definitely will help the town coffers in regards to programs for the students and for the residents. And don't get me wrong, it's jobs, 2,000 permanent, I mean, construction jobs that are union labor, and then you're going to have 85 to 100 permanent jobs that are 65 to 160, in that range, depending. The Groton Utilities, the ratepayers, are going to benefit for the next 30 years because the ratepayers are the owners of Groton Utilities, so that's going to be in the 50 to 60 million-dollar age in current dollars, and I'm sure over time it will increase. Another local person that's on our team is Jim Rossman. He grew up right down the street from that property. He's our civil engineer and knows that property very, very well, and so in regards to where buildings are being put, he's probably got the most knowledge of that property than anybody, so he's very, very thorough in regards to what we're doing, and we're willing to work with the town to try to make accommodations for the residents and get this host fee agreement, but that's the first thing we have to do, and then everything else goes through planning and zoning and inland wetlands, and, you know, this building will be the best building built in this area when it's done. Thank you.
Next on the list I have Zell Stever. Just need your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, town manager, and town clerk. My name is Zell Stever. I live at 81 Main Street in Groton. I came prepared for a two-hour presentation, but told was I'd have to limit that to a short period of time, so I will do just that. You already have received my statement. I hope you have taken the chance to read that. I will basically only extract parts of this for the purposes of this meeting tonight. Let me start by saying that I represent tonight as Chairman of the Groton Resiliency and Sustainability Task Force, and we respectfully recommend the town postpone entering into the proposed Northeast Edge Host Municipal Fee Agreement. And we start by saying that the Groton Town Council this past year passed a resolution, and I will just briefly read that for you and for the public, that, quote, "Together, as elected community leaders, we commit to actively promoting and employing resiliency and sustainability principles as we seek solutions that effectively address climate risks, including protecting land, air, and water, lowering our carbon footprint, combating the devastating impacts of climate change, reducing injury and illness, and to maintain and improve our quality of life. And further be it, resolved, the Groton Town Council will consider these guiding principles to be essential to all aspects of town governance and operations." I'll really talk about just one thing tonight, and that is the issue with energy. Data centers consume enormous amounts of energy, of electric energy. Mr. Quinn states that the proposed Northeast Edge Data Center will require between 100 megawatts and 250 megawatts. Now, most people think of watts in terms of light bulbs and whether a 50-watt or 100-watt light bulb works. To give you some idea of what 100 megawatts really is, that's essentially equivalent to a community that has 12,000 houses, and if you want the other end, a 200-megawatt facility would be equivalent to the power that is in a nuclear submarine now under construction down in our waterfront. So think about how much power that is. That is enough electrical power to supply more than 15,000 homes, a colossal amount of single, a single facility that is likely to increase over time. If that power comes from the grid, its emissions and their contributions to climate change can be calculated. While these emissions remote to Groton are certainly a concern, the proposed data center plans to operate diesel generators on this site, not only for emergency purposes, but to generate electricity on peak demand days.
Thank you.
Any, any of these, and I'll just finish this a second here if I may, essentially, what that means is that when you have a hot summer day and our DEP indicates to the public that it's hazardous to be outside, and they ask you to not take your kids outside, to turn off your air conditioners, we are going to be then producing enough electricity to run that facility, whether it be 100 or 250 megawatts using diesel power, and that's going to do nothing but make the air quality worse. And I'll leave the rest of this for you to read, and I hope that at some point the task force would be certainly willing and pleased to discuss this matter further with the council. Thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions as you may wish. Thank you.
All right. Next on the list I have Liz Rayzback. Just need your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Rayzback. I live at 81 Main Street in Groton. First, I want to thank Mr. Bird and his staff for successfully removing the boulders on Riverside Avenue in Noank, and that means a lot to all the people who go down to the shore to fish, and we really appreciate it and appreciate the support that we had from many of you on the council. Second, of course, I need to talk about the data center. In our longer-written comments we submitted this morning, we covered noise, blasting, leveling of hilltops and bridges, stormwater runoff and pollution, impacts on wetland streams and Long Island Sound, air pollution, global warming, appropriate green standards for a data center, and the fact that there is no business plan for this data center. So what I've been thinking about is, how do we stop having this happen in Groton? That a project feels as though it kind of sneaks up on us, and suddenly the public finds out about it, and then we have, we have a big controversy. So at present to us, the regulatory system is not adequately addressing the problems that a project like this data center causes. Here's how it works. A developer comes to the town council and pitches his project. The town council discusses the project, usually almost entirely in executive session, where they're briefed by the town staff on the proposal. There may be a carefully controlled public presentation by the developer, as there was for the oral school development, but on the whole, there is little effort to publicize the project or welcome public discourse. Only after the project becomes a public controversy does the town begin to be more transparent. We already have one hosted municipal fee agreement with GotSpace, also involving at that time Thomas Quinn. We noticed that no one is talking about that agreement for a data center on Route 117 next to the reservoir above Merritt Hotel. Why is that? GotSpace seems to be falling apart, we have heard. Who will pick up the lucrative pieces? What bag will the town be left holding? That agreement slid through the council last March and April after an executive session with virtually no public discussion.
Thank you.
I have one more sentence.
Okay.
So the result was that GotSpace got what it wanted with no added environmental protection or cost-benefit analysis, and what cost to the town and the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list I have Ian Thomas. Just need your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Ian Thomas, 24 Jefferson Drive. All right, so I definitely want to echo the sentiments that we've already heard tonight. We need to exercise the abundance of caution in regards to the host fee agreement. There's a number of concerns. First and foremost, GotSpace is still in play, whether we want to believe it or not. There's a legal document signed for up to about two data centers, I believe. So, you know, between that document and this possible draft host fee agreement, we're looking at upwards of maybe three to four data centers popping up here, so we've got to be very careful with what we're doing. So I advise extreme caution, and I have some questions about what's in these documents. I've been kind of filtering my way through it. I read the analysis of HB 6514, and it says that "the bill prohibits developers and owners from beginning data center facility construction," on and on, "until fee agreements established." However, that's in the analysis document. When I went into the actual document itself, I was not able to find the section where it stated that a fee agreement must be in place first, so I would like to know where that language is, and if it could be identified by section and number, because I can't find it. Please help me out. Also, it states that anyone that is anticipating becoming an owner or operator or co-locator could apply to the DECD to enter an agreement with them. I'm wondering if the town has looked into the DECD and kind of gotten some verification on any Edge, and to that end also GotSpace at this point. Are they still valid and verified possible owners or operators? In the same document, it mentions any agreement needs to include a detailed description of the capital project that is subject to the agreement, so that's also something that's very important to look into, because we've heard an amazing, astounding lack of detail when it comes to that. astounding lack of detail when it comes to that, especially at the public hearing last Thursday, which is a whole other story. So, long story short, let's see, there's also a 36-month period of time between the signing of the fee agreement and when the first application for a building permit is required to be delivered by the owner. Why so long? There's also a lot of use of the word reasonably informed, reasonably satisfied, reasonable amount of times. I think we should have more specific language for timestamps on what needs to be done and when. And also, there was a section in, let's see, section 1-10-4 of the House bill, where it states that not only is the data center tax exempt, but also any other facility or location that might be added on to it later on.
Thank you.
So there's that. Also, one more thing. There is another section where it says that a penalty for exceeding the sound attenuation requirements, the penalty for the data center would be to donate 50 acres of land, the same 50 acres that they were willing to give up in a land swap. So how can that be in the host fee agreement, you know, when that land is already on the table for a possible land swap for the 17 acres?
Thank you.
So this document needs severe critical looks. Thank you.
I was going to ask about the House bill, but it wasn't that from the legislators.
So you don't have a question?
Well, I'm good. It was just a question about the House bill.
Thank you. All right, next on my list, I have Paul Beetz. Just need your name and address for the record.
Mayor, members of the council, town manager, citizens, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to speak about the cloud. I'm a taxpayer, pay electric bills. I support all the environmental concerns mentioned by others previously. Our decades-old concern about increasing non-permeable surfaces, and all of the bad stuff that will eventually end up in Long Island Sound if it makes it through the reservoir. I wondered since the state exempted data centers from local property tax, if that also includes a tax on the land, taxes paid to the fire district, and if that also exempts them from the state payment in lieu of tax program. Everybody agrees that data centers use a lot of electricity. Electricity is a vital resource. To get better handle on how much, it would be nice to know, after all the proposed data centers are online, how many offshore wind turbines would be consumed. It's hard to understand the legislature and the governor embracing this after subsidizing wind farms to cut carbon generated electricity. We live in a state with the second highest electric rates. We all draw from the same New England power grid. Demand goes up, price goes up. I think data centers should be located someplace where there's a lot of continuous sun, that it can embrace new technology to produce their electricity. How much do we have to subsidize the data centers? Two wrongs do not make a right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Was there an address on?
I have 47 Church Street. Is that your correct address? Thank you. Next on the list, I have Paula McDougall. Just need your name and address for the record.
My name is Paula McDougall. I live at 464 Flanders Road, which is directly across the street from the proposed data center. So you probably don't have to guess where I'm going with this. Of course, we would like you to vote no. It has, obviously has a lot to do with where my house is located, and it also has a lot to do with many, 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 many points that some people have already pointed out. My son is Jesse McDougall. He's the one who sent you the very long, detailed, point-by-point letter. A lot of you people have that letter out there. If you, I still have more copies if you need it. So instead of going on about the electricity and, you know, the many, many other issues about conservation and that this data center can bring, you know, all the ills it can bring compared to the positive things it can bring, let me take this in another direction. Okay? There, this has, this is industrial land, and it's been zoned that since forever. Okay? When I was 25 and I bought my house, I was very naive, and I didn't really know it was industrial land, but that's kind of a moot point. The town council, even, I know there are things that they do at planning and zoning level, but I really think that the town council should have a lot, lot, lot more in writing before you make a decision on this. Renderings, what are they going to do about wells? What are they going to do about, I have a stone foundation. My house was built in the 1920s. What's going to happen if my foundation slips apart? So there's all those aspects. So you could say, okay, this was always zoned industrial, and you know something's going to happen, and something's going to go there. Well, we have this concept of a grandfather clause. And where I'm going with that is that when they zoned, when planning and zoning got together, how many years ago? I have no idea. And they said, oh, this looks good for light industrial. Perhaps they didn't realize that in the past, I've been out in my house for 40-something years. Perhaps they didn't realize that all of a sudden, now we have a residential area, or more residential area, certainly not like Bel Air or some of the other residential areas, but there are two more streets that have been built and putting housing in there. So just because it was zoned that before doesn't mean that it's the right thing for it now, or that this is the right thing for that light industrial place. There have been other projects brought up in the years that we've lived here, and they were all negated. People didn't want it. They were coming in from Hazel, coming in from Hazelnut Hill Road. Whatever the reasons were, people decided that this wasn't the right place, and so they built further up. They have the industrial park that's further up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list, I have Chad Bault. Just need your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Chad Bault, 268 Thomas Road. This is regarding the data center. This is, I'm strongly in favor for this project because it's going to create hundreds of union jobs with good wages, benefits, and good representation, pretty much, you know, keep our local residents working in Groton. So I'm strongly in favor for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Eugenia Vilagra. Just need your name and address for the record.
My name is Eugenia Vilagra, and I live at 76 Riverview Avenue, and I'll be speaking on behalf of GCA to the issue of environmental impacts of data centers. Global warming is the existential crisis of our times, and unless we act to do something about it now, our children and grandchildren will be dealing with an even more dire situation. Our objective should be to lessen future impacts by lowering the town's contributions to climate change, not raising them with a data center. Data centers contribute considerably to global warming. They use staggering amounts of electricity and generate a lot of heat. We are concerned that the data center will harm the natural environment in the area during extreme climatic or prolonged weather events. The good news is that it's possible to power a data center with 100% renewable energy. Two such data centers are currently planned for Houston and Austin, Texas. Carbon neutrality is a key part of their business plan. In Connecticut, it costs 10 cents per kilowatt hour for ordinary energy and 13.3 cents for green and renewable energy. Not a huge difference. What the data center can do for Groton after all those tax breaks is pollute less. New England Edge, however, has no plans to use solar panels. The town could require that solar panels be placed on the 250,000-square-foot roof or be ground-mounted. Solar could then be linked to an onsite battery storage system designed to maximize solar generation and satisfy all peak shaving requirements that we heard a lot about from Mr. Quinn last week. We pointed out that this Holstein property with its forested hills and bedrock ridges will make building a data center there extremely difficult. New England Edge is planning to buy a flat 17-acre parcel owned by the town located right on Flanders Road. The developer will have to cut down approximately 10 acres of mature trees. It will take a few days to cut those trees down and 100 years to grow them back. After clearcutting, they will then level the hills and blast the rocky ridges. Trees and wetlands both enhance water quality, control erosion, maintain stream flows, sequester carbon, and provide habitat to at least one-third of all threatened and endangered species. Migrating birds stop in that area for food. The data center development will degrade Groton's Central Greenway. Now, unfortunately, I'm going to have to look a gift horse in the mouth, but you should know that the 50-acre western portion of the Holstein property that New England Edge is planning to donate to the town has been badly damaged by many years of ATV activity, and it is loaded with invasive plants. It will take many years and a significant investment of the town's time and money to restore it. Finally, stormwater management is another problem with this data center. Stormwater is water polluted by Route I-95 emissions that settle on the data center roof and mix with parking lot contaminants that combine with rainwater and flow into drains, into our reservoir, down to Fort Hill Brook, and onto Long Island Sound. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to all of you here tonight about this compelling environmental issue.
Thank you. Next, I have Catherine Pratt. Just need name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Catherine Pratt. I live at 75 Front Street. Mayor Melendez, members of the town council, good evening. I appreciate this opportunity to respectfully urge the town council to reject the proposed host municipality fee agreement between the town of Groton and AnyEdge LLC to build a data center off Flanders Road. As you know, Public Act 21-1, which provides tax incentives for qualified data centers, was rushed into law under the emergency certification procedure without committee referrals or public hearings. It provides for exemptions from the sales and use tax and property tax exemptions for real property and equipment used by the data center for up to 30 years, with no benchmarking of the extent to which these lavish tax incentives are driving job creation and economic growth. Has AnyEdge, as the anticipated owner of a qualified data center in the state, applied to DECD with a detailed capital project description for review? Has the application been approved by DECD and the proposed AnyEdge facility designated as a qualified data center? According to Public Act 21-1, Sections 110B, 110C1, and 110C2D, those are the first steps to qualify for the tax exemptions. In the bill's legislative history, Representative Scanlon lays out the order of events by which a qualified data center comes to life. Quote, "The way the process works is that an individual who wants to build a data center has to go to the DECD. They have to fill out an application that the DECD commissioner will design. Once that person has filled out that application, the DECD commissioner then notifies the local legislative body in the municipality of which the person wants to go and build this center. And then that legislative body, per this law, has to come up with a host fee agreement." Unquote. House proceedings, March 1st, 2021, page 13410. It is logical for applicants to submit a detailed project description to DECD as a first step. That way, they have already been vetted and approved by the state as owners, operators, or co-location tenants of qualified data centers before they negotiate an agreement with the host municipality. When asked to describe his proposed project, Mr. Quinn refers us to a data center in Ohio. He gives no details of what would eventually be built on the Flanders Road site. Mr. Quinn is asking the town to put the cart before the horse, and it is not clear that he has complied with the aforementioned sections of Public Act 21-1. Is the town council prepared to betray whole neighborhoods, cause environmental harm, and commit taxpayers to questionable tax subsidies to cut a precarious deal with a company that has never delivered a data center and has offered no plan? Please vote no on this ill-advised proposal. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, I have Joseph Tonner. Just need your name and address for the record.
Joseph Tonner, 11 Old Mill Road, Quaker Hill. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm the executive director of Connecticut State Building Trades Council. I represent 13 unionized craft and over 30,000 working men and women in the construction field, and we strongly support this development. Not, I would say this, there's not too many developers that come around and actually want to include the community, pay a livable wage, not only on the construction side, but also pay a livable wage with the full-time jobs. Typically, in the state of Connecticut, we're chasing large, large conglomerates, multinational, that are probably the wealthiest people in the world, that come into communities, that get tax subsidies from the towns. They drive around these little blue vans, and they create $16-an-hour part-time jobs with no benefits. You're not going to see this here with Mr. Quinn and his team. They've came in, they've made a commitment, not only to the community, but to the people. And what we're going to do in the building trades is we're going to make sure people that are disadvantaged, of color, women, returning veterans, and we're going to incorporate a streamline with Grasso Tech to make sure folks from this community are going to work on this, on this site at a livable job, a livable wage, which is very important. You don't see these developments too often. We have faith in the elected officials and the town of Groton to make sure that the due diligence is met on behalf of the citizens that have concerns. We have no doubt, we've been working with Mr. Quinn for a few years. He's a man of integrity, we feel, and he's made a commitment to us in the building trades to make sure that the folks on these jobs are going to be paid well. And in the unionized construction industry, there's no subsidies for our members. We have a hard time putting our people to work because we don't, they don't get paid $10-an-hour without benefits, which nobody should in our mind. We don't feel that way. Over 40% of construction workers in the state of Connecticut are being subsidized, either through food assistance or health benefits. You're not going to find that in the building trades. We take care of our own, we negotiate on their behalf, and when developers come in like, like Thomas Quinn, we sit down, and he was willing to sit down, enter into a project labor agreement to make sure livable wages are going to be paid on this job. I read a few pieces of paper that were handed around, and I respect these folks that are here tonight. I have no problem with them, but to minimize the benefit to the community, I think, is disingenuous, because that benefit to the community is huge. If you're going to have 2,000 construction workers, and over 90, 90% of them are going to be Connecticut residents, over 200 families that we represent in the unionized construction industry are actually Groton residents, right? And we're going to streamline the kids from the technical schools into this job. That's a huge benefit to this community. It's a huge benefit. It's understated, truly understated. And on top of it, like I mentioned earlier, the full-time jobs are tremendous. The full-time jobs are good-paying jobs, self-sustaining jobs. So thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Howard, I actually don't know how to pronounce your last name, sorry. Vez?
There are lots of good numbers there. Howard Vez, 10 Prospect Street, Mystic. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the opportunity to speak about the data center. So I'm not here tonight to plead for a definitive end to the project, but for a pause to carefully consider, to fully define. consider, to fully define exactly what would be built and what its impact would be. I fear, despite my respect for this council, that momentum is building to make a decision on the basis of incomplete information, on more of a sales pitch, though an elaborate one than a fully formed building plan, economic analysis, and environmental analysis. I urge the council not to be swept away by a developer's enthusiasm, however sincere, or to allow doubts to be swept away by rosy predictions that may have little basis in fact. I heard the gentleman from New England Edge mention earlier in support of his position that there are no comparable structures or businesses anywhere in New England, and he asks you to infer from that that there's a great opportunity. It may be equally logical to infer from that that there's simply no demand for this type of building, and that if it goes forward, we may be left with a large hulk of a building for which there's neither demand nor need. The need for caution should be evident from the recent oral school history and what should be a universal desire to avoid oral school, too. There are, in my opinion, some alarming parallels. Once again, the council is seemingly being asked to embark on a mammoth building project with a company that's never built anything comparable. That, as I understand it from the press, didn't even exist three months ago, and that's a sequel to two other startups that began with the same stated goals, but again relying simply on newspaper accounts, have generated more litigation than construction. Insofar as I'm aware, the council has once again been presented with an incomplete description of what will be built, without any building plans or site plans, without even disclosure of such basic information as the number of buildings, where they'll sit on the 170-plus acres being acquired, what the developer intends to do with the substantial acreage not designated either for construction or conservation at the moment, what will be done to safeguard the environment on the land that's being acquired, the pools, the streams, the wooded hills, and on the surrounding land that can be seriously impacted by erecting structures that may tower over surrounding woodlands, by covering 14 acres or more with pavement and buildings impairing water absorption and altering runoff, by the power lines that will be needed to feed its enormous electrical needs, by what may be required to generate that power by its 24-hour-a-day operation, and by the potential for years of heavy construction or a year or more in any event. Moreover, unlike other established uses for which there's a track record and demonstrable need, the speculative nature of this proposal raises substantial additional questions. If authorized, will the project ever be completed? If completed, will the buildings ever generate the fees in lieu of real estate taxes that are presented as the inducement? Has the developer identified an operator or demonstrated a customer base without which the fees dangled before the council will never materialize?
Thank you. Sorry.
Out of time. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next, I have Natalie Billing. Just need your name and address for the record.
Natalie Billing, 15 Ashby Street, Mystic. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here in support of the council approving a fee agreement for a data center. It's my understanding that doing so doesn't mean a data center will be built. You're not approving the actual plans. It only means if they present a plan that can meet the requirements of planning and zoning and inland wetlands and the state Department of Environmental Protection, that they will pay Groton $1.5 million a year with an annual increase instead of taxes. You're creating a fee agreement and negotiating some other safeguards, which is great, but nothing you're doing means it will ultimately be approved. They have lots of other hurdles to climb. We're talking about industrially zoned land, 150 acres. We're told the data center with parking will cover less than 10 acres with a single-story, possibly two-story building, leaving 140 acres undisturbed. They'll donate 50 acres to the town that could be protected with a conservation easement if the council so chose. The building will be tucked up as far from the wetlands as close to I-95 as possible for ease of bringing utilities to the property, and it'll be buffered on the Flanders roadside by a treed area the length of a football field or two. It's not going to be right up against Flanders Road. As industrial uses go, I believe this will impact the environment and the neighborhood less than many other uses I've heard proposed for this property over the decades. Some other industry could clear 30 to 70 acres of the land under our zoning. I'd hate to see that. Once constructed, it seems to me, we'll barely notice this building. We're told 30, 40, 50 cars per shift, that's a minimal traffic impact. Years ago, Groton taxpayers were asked to pay $10 million to bring water and sewer up Flanders Road to attract businesses. We said, no, let the business pay for it. These folks will. Decades ago, Groton's grand list was over 50% commercial industrial. Today, it's down to 30%. For residential taxpayers, that's not a good trend. Some of the speakers here tonight may not be considering the whole picture. They have their cause, they're advocating for, that's fine, but you have to consider the whole picture. Residents want all the services we have, and we want many more. Athletic fields, a community center, a town pool, you know the list. All good things people ask for, but they all cost money. And the only way we can pay for them is taxes. If we as a town don't grow smartly, then taxes on our homes will go up steeply. Data center businesses are top-tier companies, they give back to their host communities. They have the funds to do this project well, to build it green, to do all the most modern, sound attenuation. They'll use project labor agreements, which you all know means they're not looking to cut corners or build on the cheap. They want quality work. Am I at my time?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. In conclusion, is it the end of the world if you say no? No, we lose $1.5 million a year. But is it possible down the road we'll go, oh, we could have had a data center when something much less attractive is built on this property? Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Halsey Land. Just need your name and address for the record.
Hello there, good evening. Halsey Land, I'm at 129 Indian Field Road. Basically, just a concerned citizen. I actually, our property is situated closer to Hazel Net Hill Road, so I am a little concerned about the effects of our well. Just wanted to see if there are any sort of guarantees that our water will go untouched and unharmed due to the blasting and grading. And basically, everybody here has done a really good job at bringing up all the environmental concerns. I also have a little bit of traffic concerns off the 117. The speed limit is, I think, a little too high as it is at 45 miles per hour, and I'm wondering if that is going to be like an access road to the data center, if you're planning on, you know, bringing it off the freeway and going there and going through. So something to consider, you know, maybe traffic light there. And yes, thank you so much for hearing me.
Next, I have Michael Boucher. Just need your name and address for the record.
Boucher, Michael, 16 Hillside in Groton. I'm here tonight to speak against the data center agreement between NE Edge and the Town of Groton. This is a rushed agreement which will be the worst ever negotiated by the town in its 317-year history. You are signing away our children's children's future. This deal will create a tax-free, 100-plus-acre industrial data center park in the city, I mean, the town. A deal that returns pennies for the dollars for residents but creates instant wealth for a developer. So many problems, unanswered questions, and vague responses. Why would anyone sign this agreement? There seems to be a tax break of about 75%, and I would like to see the town staff work up the amount of funding coming in under a fee agreement versus a normal tax assessment and present that to the council and people. A fee agreement based on electric load and data capacity measured in megawatts. Data centers will become more efficient and the fee per building will drop probably dramatically. This is a tax-free, 100-plus-acre industrial data center park. It will fill up, and I would like more information as to the number of buildings, footprint, and square footage that would be allowed under our present zoning regulations before any data agreement is signed. Mr. Quinn seems to be under the impression that our town would also benefit from a municipal utilities power agreement and that ratepayers would also benefit. All the profit from electrical power sales goes to the city of Groton and may help GU ratepayers. The Town of Groton and all ever-source ratepayers do not benefit. Other concerns to a fully-developed 100-acre-plus industrial data center park, what would that be the effect on our environment and the surrounding neighborhoods? We can't go ahead with this project based on two small buildings. This is going to get bigger and it's going to get bigger fast. What does a data agreement deal add up for Groton residents? The vetting process in Groton for this deal, zero. The ability to negotiate a deal in Groton, zero. The amount of taxes collected by Groton in this deal, zero. The number of data centers built by the developer, deal. Total for Groton residents, zero. If this deal is so good, it can wait. The town council needs to push this deal off the table and hit the pause button. Who is Mr. Quinn? Consultant, manager, president, CEO, partner, or just a real estate developer with a skill set and team to make all the political connections and a huge deal that we don't know how much is worth in hundreds of millions? What are the possible litigation issues? The last meeting raised a lot of concerns with Godspeed and Verde. Tomorrow in the newsstands, you'll see an article by Dave Collins that raises even more concerns, and that's going to hit the newsstands tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Jesse Stratton. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Jesse Stratton, 31 Spring Street in Groton. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I want to start out by just saying, we all depend upon data centers. I am not here to categorically oppose data centers. I think we would all be pretty hard-pressed to live our lives without them. But I do agree with others here tonight to say that the agreement that is currently before you is so far premature for your consideration of approval or disapproval. There are so many unknowns, but I'm going to focus tonight on a few of the knowns in it. There aren't many things spelled out, but these two actually are, and I have deep concerns about them. We heard represented again tonight that this would be the best building built, and yet the five categorizing or the five evaluatory principles that are included in that, only two of them really apply to this project. Envision deals with roads and bridges, has nothing to do with a building. Even Energy Star deals with buildings after they are built, and they only have to be 75% better than others. In addition, Breen is used in Europe. It's not used, to my knowledge, in this state, in the States, and I think you would have a hard time getting certified. ISO 5001 is a management program, and it's a very good one, as is LEED Design and Construction, which should be a part of the initial construction and the operation and management that follows it. The second concern I have is a rather detailed part of that agreement that deals with onsite generation, specifically the generators. Ideally, as has been mentioned before, the power would be 100% renewable, and that is possible. Yes, more expensive, but possible. But even so, I do recognize that there would be a backup need for this data center. But to install Tier 2 generators for backup use is totally unacceptable. Tier 2 generators, the standards for those were developed in 2001. It's a 20-year-old technology that is proposed for building that we're told will be there for 20 or 30 years. Tier 4, which is at least a lot better, it does reduce the pollutants over Tier 1 by about 90%, still has emissions, but far, far, far better, and that has been the industry standard since 2015. This is 2022. Need permits, and one of the things that's been unclear in last week when Mr. Quinn spoke, it's very hard to tell what he is really talking about in terms of peak shaving. I would love to know, what is the amount of load he could shed? What is his agreement with Groton Utilities about demand-side management? But until we know those things, to allow Tier 2 generators to be sanctioned by this council is an insult, really, to the health of everyone in the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Bruce Flax. Just need your name and address for the record.
Bruce Flax, 632 Noink Road in Mystic. Thanks to the council, town manager, town clerk, mayor, everybody here tonight. I just want to come here in support of the data center plan for New England Edge LLC proposal. There's been a lot of discussion, talk about the energy and environmental impacts. This is from a Kamoine consultant. As reported by Wired, a study published in the journal Science in 2020 found that through energy efficiency initiatives, data centers have been able to grow more sustainably. In 2010, data centers around the world consumed roughly 194 terawatt hours of energy or 1% of worldwide electricity use. By 2018, the compute capacity of data centers increased sixfold, internet traffic grew tenfold, and storage capacity rose by a factor of 25, but the study finds that over this time, data center energy use grew just 6% to 205 terawatt hours. In addition, you know, it's been said it's going to provide 2,000 union jobs, well-paying jobs. The first agreement was approved by the council months ago in 2021, and the second proposed agreement will benefit the town economically, offering between a half a million and one and a half million per data center. There's a bunch of facts I'll let it go because everybody said a lot and a lot of people have spoken. It's owned industrial, and I think somebody had said it, but think of what could possibly go there as industrials owned, and that the data center is certainly a relatively smaller alternative and less invasive than what could go there. And finally, I ask you to look at the project with unobstructed views. Do your due diligence, but do not be swayed by bullies or people with ulterior motives. The council should learn from past mistakes, but not have them cloud facts in future projects. It's a process, I think Natalie said it really well. Let the town process work and move through the various steps. If it's deemed not worthy along the way, it will fail then, but don't stop it here. There's been people asking to fact-check the proposal, and I'd say fact-check some of the people in the room, too. There's a lot of information being said, and it just, you know, it all could be fact-checked. So appreciate your time and have a good evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, I have Denise Katusha. Just need your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Denise Katusha from 416 Flanders Road. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. I just wanted to point out there are numerous streams and wetlands on that property, which would have to be investigated by the National Wetlands Inventory and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. It is definitely going to make a bad effect on the wildlife there. And don't lose sight of the fact that the benefit for the wetlands is that it improves the quality of the water and can intercept runoff so that it doesn't, prior to going out to the open water, it removes all the pollutants, too. I think people should know that this data center will run 24/7. Definitely going to increase the carbon footprint. They're going to use diesel-fuel generators, which Mr. Quinn himself said would run every two days and in outages. The centers will have smokestacks which are going to heat up our atmosphere. It will also affect our wells and the contamination of our wells, and we all have wells in that whole area on Flanders Road. My concern is the fact that after all these decades, and I've lived there for over 40 years, of overseeing the town... and I've lived there for over 40 years, of overseeing, the town overseeing the open space of that parcel on Flanders Road, actually owned by the town of Groton, you're going to give it to the company in a land swap? Since you just passed a resolution to decrease the carbon footprint, it seems that you are now throwing that resolution under the rug. You need to know, too, the parking lights in that parking lot is going to be on every night, and that will create light pollution. As far as the traffic pattern goes, Mr. Quinn himself, the other night, said that it would be 85 trucks a day. Now imagine that on Flanders Road, on Route 1, on Route 184. I would hope that you have investigated the stability of the New England Edge Company and its ability to complete the project and to follow through with any agreements it makes with the town. Don't forget, GodSpace's data center proposal was rejected by the town of Basra over the same concerns that everyone is bringing forth here tonight, as well as the Verde Group, which is a subject of litigation related to a proposed data center in Montville, which was also voted down. So I ask you to do the same and vote this down.
Thank you. Next, I have Sidney Van Zant. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. I have trouble hearing. I think we could use another sound box in this room so that the people in the back of the room can hear what's going on in the front of the room. My name is Sidney Van Zant of 3-Front Street, Noank. I have been involved, concerned with the saving of open space and the protection of water, both for drinking water as well as estuaries that run into Fisher's Island, Long Island Sound, as well as stormwater runoff issues in projected developments. I was one of the few folks that formed the Groton Open Space Association. Katie Pratt over here, her two parents were the other ones that started it. We number well over 900 members in 2021 to work with the state to raise funds for the Haley Farm, to fight off a lot of development on Bluff Point, which I'm going to miss because it looks as though there's only two minutes allowed for each speaker. I have here our 50-year book, which tells you all the developments, open space, that we have here and the developments that happened, all the pressures for Bluff Point. Can you imagine a four-lane highway from 95 down to the end of Bluff Point to the bridge to Long Island? What would this place look like now? Awful. So, there it is. All you have to join, you get that. But there, with this proposed development, the rumor is that the new proposal in 2022 will be tearing down a whole hillside. And the runoff of that giant development will run into Fort Hill Brook that Gosa has endeavored to protect by helping the state purchase the property now called Candlewood Hill Wildlife Management Area, Tilcon. Tilcon owned it before. The source of Fort Hill Brook that then runs into Gosa's Sheep Farm and Sheep Farm South, before it runs into Long Island, Mumford Cove and Long Island Sound. The Planning Commission has the authority and the duty to make referral to the Connecticut DEP as provided in the Town of Groton zoning regulations 6.12G. If any proposed treatment, measure, or practice is in question, it may be referred to the DEP and the Department of Health or other agencies for review and comment. Evidence of required permits or proposals may be required. Further, Section 6A 12.5 states, "Where it is determined that development may result in significant water quality effects from development runoff, it shall be referred to the DEP." The Connecticut General Statutes Title 8 said that the zoning regulations shall be made "with reasonable consideration for the protection of existing and potential public surface and groundwater drinking water supply."
Thank you. Sorry, that was three minutes.
I would refer that you go to Section 8-2B, which is now in the zoning planning. And it says that the general statutes require the town to protect Long Island Sound in its regulations. And if you read that, you will find that the town cannot dump all of the runoff of this whole huge area into Fort Hill Brook that goes directly into Long Island Sound. And for those who have not been following that, you look at all the reports of Long Island Sound and the whole West End of Long Island Sound is dead because of all the runoff. And so it's important that this town, along with the others, pay attention to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Gary Wells. Gary Wells. Just need your name and address for the record.
My name is Gary Wells. I live at 5 Route 27 in Old Mystic. Honorable councilors. I would like to, one of the things that I'm aware of is that the town of Groton has the best internet access in the state of Connecticut. Now, you may, this is not the advertisement from the cable companies and the phone company. This is the state of Connecticut maintains a data center in one of the Pfizer buildings for backup because we have the best internet connections in the state. And I think long before Microsoft and the rest of us discovered the internet, it was the playground of the Department of Defense. So I think we have the Navy to thank for our outstanding internet connections. I'm a little concerned that with this power requirements, that when we, if we grant, grant approval to this, we'll be granting an exclusive to this company. There won't be room for a competitor or someone else. It'd have sucked up all the, all the power in the room. And another question I have is, I don't know how the model of these things work. Is it normal to have data center owners not operate them? We have operators and owners, is it normal? I know in the case of the state's data center in the Pfizer building, obviously Pfizer owns their own buildings for their own purposes. And, you know, they don't, they don't, but I'm wondering if they're going to have to bring in data center operators. So I'm curious about that particular model. And the other thing is that I heard from the discussion last, last Thursday that they're going to offer colocation facilities. In other words, you could bring your own servers and park them and rent space and connections and, from them. And so I'm wondering if, are we creating a little mini Cayman Island where businesses, where equipment that would normally be taxed as business equipment gets to move to the data center and avoids taxation? Anyway, thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Lynn Marshall. Just need your name and address for the record.
Lynn Marshall, 118 Pearl Street. I've read the noise section of the data center agreement, and it isn't bad. But there are five things that I need, think, need to be addressed before the town council would sign off on it. The first thing is, there's this process specified there of measurement, design, and testing, and that's the one and done. But noise, however, may change over time. Additional equipment may be added without first asking permission. Equipment may be modified with unintended consequence of becoming noisier. Equipment may start to malfunction and get noisier. Equipment wears out and gets noisy and may need to be decommissioned. Therefore, an annual noise survey is important. Second thing, I've been hearing about the generators. These generators are used in three ways. One is periodic testing. Mr. Quinn said monthly. I know our home ones are weekly, but somewhere in that range. Loss of power, they're used for emergency backup power, and that's the Tier 2 generator, that's the noisier one. And then for peak shaving during the summer when it gets hot. The question you have to answer is, are you, those generators, are they going to meet your noise standard, or can they go at higher levels? And the reason for them being at higher levels is because it's an emergency. What other towns have looked at is, you asked the question, is the power interruption frequent or infrequent? The neighbor said, "We lose power up there all the time." Mr. Quinn said, "We're bringing in other power. We won't lose it very often." The other question is, how long would you be without power? Is it just a couple hours? Or is it for an extended period of time over days? So if it's something that's very infrequent, only for a couple hours, you might let them go over it. If, however, if it's more frequent, and it could be for days, then you definitely don't want to do that. If in doubt, do the more conservative thing. The neighbors will bless you for it. Then the third is the peak shaving. This is happening, Mr. Quinn said, one to two hours. From what I've heard, it's two to three hours. It's generally in the three to six in the evening, so when people are wanting to have dinner. And he said, in looking at last year's records, it would have been, in 2021, it would have been for about 12 hours total. Is that a typical year? With, the temperature is rising. Is it going to be more often over time that you're going to have in your dinnertime have loud noises? So again, do you want to have those meet your regular noise standard? I think that's really important to address those. Moving on to item number three, is the measurements. The measurements don't specify in there whether it's broadband or narrowband. And they're letting the noise consultants decide that. You may want to think about that carefully, or else you're going to be monitoring those noise consultants very carefully. Broadband is great. It's one number, DVA. Everything, the low pitches, the high pitches, they all get mushed together into one number. It relates to hearing, it's a great number to use. However, remember people talking about the problems with the Chandler, Arizona data center. And what they complained about was a narrowband noise, a narrowband tonal noise. Remember, this is continuous noise, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and this is what it sounds like. Yeah, so you need, you need to be looking at the narrowband as well. I'll just briefly say, yeah, you've got to have noise standards. You've got a great state to the north of you that's done a lot with that, in the towns, their DEP. I'd be glad to help you in pointing you in some directions and parameters you should be using. I do have a background, I didn't have time to introduce myself. And finally, the noise consultants you use, this agreement, it's a back and forth. The owner's consultant suggests something, your consultant agrees it. I've been looking at these, these reports from Massachusetts, and your noise consultant is critical. Those, the people, their noise consultant often does not get it right the first time. You have got to have a really good noise consultant in there to call them on everything, or even just to improve and get the information you're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Kristen Earls. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Kristen Earls, 144 Brook Street, Groton. Sorry, no sound effects in my statement here. But good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, town manager and clerk. As a Groton resident since 2016, I want to first and foremost thank the council members and town staff for their work on behalf of the town and its residents. I think it goes without saying that there is a clear and collective commitment among the town leadership and resident community to support a thriving, healthy, and sustainable future for Groton. In that spirit, I appreciate the opportunity to comment on the data center host fee agreement currently under review by the town. Thanks to concerned residents and local organizations, critical environmental, economic, legal, energy, health, and quality of life issues have been raised, which, given Groton's commitment to transparency and civic process, particularly in light of the Mystic Oral School situation, as well as climate resiliency, I can only assume will be addressed as part of this process. In my mind, there are two simple considerations at hand. The evaluation of the current host agreement and proposed partner, New England Edge LLC and Mr. Quinn, and the larger evaluation of data centers as a fit for Groton on a variety of dimensions, economic, environmental, and otherwise. As an advocate for the environment and sustainable economic development, and as a businesswoman who routinely reviews and executes multimillion-dollar contracts, I'll focus on a few practical issues of concern. First, standard impact assessments. As is mentioned many times here tonight, will the town be conducting a full cost-benefit analysis of the project, including revenue, jobs, quantity, wages, full-time versus contract, home values, infrastructure, delivered when and predicated on what? Based on some quick research, the evidence that data centers produce promised quality job growth, for example, is unclear. Similarly, will the town be conducting an environmental impact assessment to determine the full scope of local impacts throughout the lifecycle of the development? My understanding is that the town's point of leverage on these issues is the host agreement currently under review. How can these be completed in the absence of a detailed plan from Mr. Quinn and New England Edge? More time to conduct proper assessments is clearly needed here. Second, briefly, regarding due diligence on the proposed partner himself. Has Mr. Quinn, to our best of our knowledge, ever led, arranged, or participated in a $200-million project? Quinn's full background, business dealings, partners, and experience must be explained. I've seen no evidence of Quinn's qualifications to organize, oversee, or manage a venture of this scale, never mind a data center. What kind of evaluation can Groton conduct on this opportunity with no transparency and to joint venture and other partners involved? There must be a mechanism for visibility here. In any business venture or partnership, an assessment of basic qualifications and performance history are standard operating procedure. In closing, I respectfully submit that the town council conducts and provides visibility into full and transparent due diligence assessments outlined as part of this process. Thank you.
Okay, so have no one else signed up for in-person? Sure. Come forward, just need your name and address for the record.
My name is Kim Scherer. Hi. My name is Kim Scherer. I live at 336 Hazel Not here Road, Groton. I don't know anything about this. I just know that I got a couple of pamphlets on my doorstep. And I lived in Groton for 35 years. I just got my forever home on Hazel Not here Road a year ago. And I'm, I have, you know, I have a problem with this. I have a well and septic now. I lived on Long here Road for 17 years. And so now I live on Hazel Not here Road. So, yeah, I don't know about the data centers. I don't know how they work. All I know is, yeah, I want to know the problems that it may cause us in the future. It said, so, yes, so that's, that's my thing. So like I said, I graduated from Vich in 1988. I lived here for a very long time, I'm from Florida. I just bought my forever home on Hazel Not here Road. And I said, I had, you know, a lot of pamphlets put on my doorstep in the last week and a half. So, yeah, so this is why I'm here. I know y'all had a week, last week y'all had a meeting. We weren't able to come to it. I'm here tonight, so. Like I said, I don't know much about a data center. I know that, it's just something about noise complaints and wetlands. And like I said, this is my first time ever having a septic. This is my first time ever having wells. And this, you know, so this is why I'm here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Just need your name and address for the record.
Yeah. My name is Phil Biondo. I live at 183 Cove Road in Stonington. I'd like to preface my remarks that I am a friend of Chris Regan's. So, but with that said, with that said, not knowing about data centers at all, I had the opportunity to speak to the New Albany, Ohio Economic Development Coordinator for data centers. And she spoke very favorably of data centers as a secondary use in her community, in that business park. Not only did it create jobs, construction jobs, but the permanent jobs. She went on to add that not only did it spur the data center project, but it spurred other IT jobs to support that data center, not directly involved with the center project itself, but other ancillary industries, IT jobs in the community. So with that said, it's not my place here as a Stonington resident to, you know, to talk about the due diligence of the project, but in finding out a little bit more, at least looking at other projects, they spoke favorably of the effect of data center in their community. So with that said, for what it's worth. Thank you.
Thank you. Just need your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Alexander Kooumanelis, K-O-U-M-A-N-E-L-I-S. I live at 269 Ridgway Drive. And I've been here since about 2008, living grass since about 2008. And I like my neighborhood, like my house, I like Groton. I really don't want to see any major changes to my neighborhood because I like it. I was driving through Flanders Road today and driving my wife and showing her where the proposal was for this, you know, potential project. And she said, well, interesting point. She says, well, well, it's funny, it's not in the high-end neighborhood. I live in Bel Air area. Most of the house on Flanders Road are middle-class houses. Hazel Light, I can't speak for, I don't know, I've never been there. I'm assuming they're middle-class houses too. I don't know. Just, and this is the second time we've had a project issue in this town. The first one was domestic oral school. Maybe it's a coincidence, or maybe it's not, but it seems we're already in middle-class neighborhoods and not in high-end neighborhoods, not in Groton, Long Point, and not in like really fancy houses. And I understand that they're going to give us like 1.5 million in taxes, revenue a year, and that revenue is going to be equally spread throughout the town. But the burden is not going to be equally spread. The burden is going to affect the people in Bel Air. It's going to affect the people in Flanders. So the whole town benefits. It's kind of like the ad verum tax. We have property taxes, everybody benefits, everybody has a burden. And this one, everybody benefits, but a lot of us have the burden of seeing our neighbor go someplace that's not going, we don't want it to go. And I just find it, I think it's something you should think about, that there always seems to be in the middle-class area and not in the high-end area. It's if.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Betsy Chindon. I live at 21 Irving Street in Mystic. My husband and I bought our house here about 11 years ago. But we just moved up here full-time about a year and a half ago from the Washington, DC area, where we saw data centers. I'm very familiar with them because they've built dozens of them over the last 20 years. So I've seen them, I've seen the problems that they cause, I've seen everything from the noise being an issue in my old hometown of Vienna, Virginia. I've seen the power very quickly become an issue, where they say they can bring in enough power, but suddenly they cannot. And then it becomes a huge transmission line that has to be built. Northern Virginia is a huge, huge data center area. I would suggest that you might want to talk to some of the people in Fairfax County, Virginia, Loudoun County, Virginia, as to how these things get built, how they grow, what becomes of them, and how they affect a lot of other issues down the road. I'll also say that, to my mind, and I know this is not on the town of Groton's property, but I see an awful lot of underused and emptier property in this vicinity. I don't see why I wouldn't benefit somewhat if data centers are such a great thing, and I use them like everyone else. Putting one at Crystal Mall might be an answer. Or any of the many other properties that are underused and have been used for various industrial uses over the years and now are vacant, as opposed to building something new on a piece of essentially virgin land, which is an environmental place. I'm sure that that is not of interest to Edge because they don't own it and you don't, yet the town doesn't own it. But I think it would be worth discussing with nearby communities as to where a data center might best be put in this general area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So we'll move on to attendees on Zoom. The first person I have listed is Kelly Polston.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I really appreciate your time. Town House and Meeting members, I really appreciate your time. I wanted to talk about the, hopefully, very respectfully request residential light trespass ordinance. I've spoken with the police for the last five years. They've been telling me that since there is no ordinance in place, that there is absolutely nothing they can do about my across-the-street neighbors having headlights on all night long, every single night. The current residents now have four lights on all night long. They actually took one down that was on a long interval motion detector light, put up a bigger light. So I have four lights on all night long, every single night. I actually went and spoke with the police again. I told them that I really don't have the money for this yet, but if I were to save up and try and put something up to get some relief from this, the police immediately, the police officer immediately cut me off and goes, well, how high are your lights and going? I'm like, well, I would be completely within the town zoning laws. I've already spoken with them. I've already known exactly what I'm supposed to do. I am not in any way, shape or form ever going to go outside of town ordinance laws. That is not the problem here. It's the other people that are doing this to me. And he proceeded to tell me that it doesn't matter what I put up because they can erect an eight-foot pole and put lights on top of it, and there is absolutely nothing that I can do, and there is absolutely nothing the police can do without ordinances. But this is my house at 1:29 a.m. These lights are on every single night, all night long, not to mention the fact that they all, there's six, seven residents of this house, not to mention they all back into their driveway and they just sit there with their high beams on my house. And they'll sit there, or they'll go out there and they'll turn their car on and clear off the snow and go back in their house, leaving their headlights on my house. And then they'll go out there and just turn off their car. They're not going anywhere. So this is an everyday occurrence. This is, they have it set so that it will go on for 5:00 in the afternoon and doesn't go off until 7:00 in the morning. And this is every single night, not to mention all their headlights and everything else. And I very respectfully request residential light trespass ordinance because I don't have money to put anything up. And what I was told is it doesn't matter if I do everything in my power to try and put something up, that they can add more lights, they can move their lights, they can put an eight-foot pole up and shine them right over the, whatever I can put up. And right at my house, there's nothing I can do. And my next neighbor said, well, why you gonna put anything up? They're gonna win anyways because they're gonna add more lights.
Thank you.
Thank you. I really respect your request. I very respectfully appreciate your time and hope you all have one tonight.
Thank you. Next on the list, I have Jesse Madugle.
Hi, everyone. So I'm going to be there today because it was a rule of 454 Alexis Road. I sent my comments into you guys already yesterday, and my mother actually already spoke. I think I agree with the broad sense that this initiative needs more time to be considered. Kind of the union operator, we are a building family. I'm not an architect by trade, I'm not a development, but we would like to see more time and effort filled into the presentation to these house people with something to sort of imagine. One of the, one of the things I do want to appeal to, to point out, and some people just brought it up here, is the human, the human cost of the direct neighborhood that's a factor, I think. Nobody wants to live near a data center. And unfortunately, we're sort of in a cross here with this development. It will essentially destroy the mobility of people who live, this data center community compared to other data centers. People live in data centers in deserts. They build down a lot, huge lots, huge pieces of infrastructure, and they go nowhere. Rarely do they build out surrounding, including by residential, residential properties. I think that this is really a good thing for this community, and obviously, you know, being part of that community, definitely wants to speak to that. But as an architect, I feel like there's always a design solution to something. And if this developer really is willing to work through the design process, I think that that must be given the appropriate amount of time before you sign a contract. And I would be willing, if the community would be willing to engage in a very practical way. But I don't think that necessarily offsets some of the other concerns, the environmental impact concerns, the ethical concerns. And I think data centers, as much as the gentleman earlier said, it does bring some short-term benefits as we're building it, brings short-term jobs, it does have some public use in terms of education, educational aspects, and some new technologies of employment that it brings to the area. But at the end of the day, it's more of a reach out to the community, not necessarily something that is publicly accessible and useful. It's really sort of feeding a broader appetite for data that the region and the nation and the world need. I'd be happy to meet online or maybe you must have, I have my information there on a number of pamphlets, my pamphlet's there as well. Please reach out. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, I have Genevieve Surf.
I don't think she's on there. She's on the line.
Okay. That's everyone I had. Is there anyone else?
Tom, well, he is here. Tom, let me share with you the person.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming, giving us your thoughts. We will now move on to responses to citizens' petitions, comments and concerns. Council Board along.
Thank you. First, I just want to thank everybody for coming out and taking the time to address the council. As I had stated, I do not feel that the time limit should be a factor. And for that, I feel that, you know, I've constantly have been advocating to make sure that we can have communication transparency and making sure everyone has a right to speak. With that, we had a presentation from the developer, proposed, you know, Mr. Quinn, and we had a response, comments to him. And I feel if there's an overwhelming need of folks to come out to speak tonight, that maybe we, as a council, as a town staff, should be looking to open up a broader time allotment without the pressure of an agenda, where we allow folks to come back and fully, you know, be able to present things that they were not able to present tonight. I think it's really important that people have things to say, and if they cannot fit that in the three-minute timeframe, sending an email does not give it the full light for the whole community to hear. It's in our email, not for everybody else. So I think, you know, I would be pushing for having an open night where then we allow and have this on full discussion. With that, I heard a lot of things. Some of the things I heard tonight was to put it on pause, and I can respect that. I have stated openly and on the record many times about making sure that this proposal agreement on the front end, meaning now in this proposal, represent what our end goal is. It was stated tonight that this needs to go to planning and zoning. As we learned from the oral school, we cannot put it on the backs of planning and zoning. We need to make sure we bring planning and zoning to us earlier and make sure that we, as a council, are writing an agreement that fits the needs of the planning and zoning, and they are reviewing it. So with that, I too agree that there is a problem. I heard from some of the residents in the neighborhood, one stating that she had lived there, or two that lived there for over 40 years. One in particular stating, this was zone industrial when? Great points. What was good then might not be good now. There is more houses in that area. If we look at history, what was good then is not good now, when we look at our history and how we've evolved in certain things, let it be social, environmental. So these are all factors to look at. What I did hear, though, is the number, the value, the cost that we are going to gain as taxpayers. I looked to Saratoga, New York, where my mother lives currently after leaving here, and the housing, industrial buildings. And at the end, when the tax break was done, the businesses walked. And now there's all these buildings sitting there that are developed on beautiful land that now are vacant. And so, things I want to see in this development agreement that I've heard and I have, you know, what is the breakdown, the, you know, decommissioning of a building like this? That should be in our proposal. I did hear loud and clear about the noise concern. Absolutely, we should have a noise consultant, and I feel the developer that's coming in should pay for that, to make sure that the town of Groton is protected. So I heard a lot of things here tonight that I'm adding to my notes. I'm constantly advocating, and I will continue to advocate for the community. What is good doesn't have a price tag on it. When you look at health and environmental changes in our town and what's good for us, we can't look at the money that's going to come in only. We have to look at the environmental aspect and the health aspect that comes in.
What's your point of order?
This is a discussion, more of a deliberation type of discussion. This is not just simply a response to citizens, and this is not on our agenda for FOI purposes to go into such detail.
Right. So she's responding to the citizens' petitions.
FOI says that if you're going to go into this much deliberative detail, that it must be on the agenda. You cannot have this much comment on a topic.
She's responding to what was stated. We're not having a debate amongst the council. She's just responding. So I'll allow it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I heard the concerns, and I will be addressing these, and I will be asking in any referral to town staff to ask for another meeting for public input, public hearing, public comments. I do think we need to slow the process. I heard the concerns of the community, and I take those very seriously. I too feel that some things were said in regards to looking at the smart growth and what that would look like for here. Again, you cannot put a price tag. Once something's up and it starts to, you know, cause environmental concerns in our town, it's really hard to take that away. So when we look at what we're going to bring in revenues, we really do have to make sure we're looking at some of the things that you guys have stated tonight, health concern, cancer rates, where do these wires, what's the study say? And I do appreciate the woman, the lady that spoke towards the end in regards to what she saw out in Washington. So again, I'm all for union work, and it was stated tonight, people of color and women. I represent both of that, and I feel that it's very important, but we also need to make sure what we bring in to bring jobs in, we're also representing the community and the needs of the community long-term, not just in a short term. So again, continue to reach out, and I think we need to move forward with having more discussions and another public session where people have a chance to be able to speak more openly in an open dialogue, and that to be solely part of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Bumgarden?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and certainly like to align my remarks with Council Board alongs, especially her first point in that this evening, we had public comment. Typically, residents are afforded five minutes to speak. Obviously, we had a lot of speakers this evening, but just considering how important it is to do our due diligence on this matter, to ask every question that is possible, we should afford the opportunity for residents to speak for five minutes on. should afford the opportunity for residents to speak for five minutes on, on certainly data centers or any other issue that is of concern. I shouldn't have to email a resident such as Lynn Marshall, which I just did, asking for the other two points she was hoping to make, because, you know, in my opinion, her questions, as were so many others posed this evening, are, it's, it's important that we provide those answers and, and get answers from folks. So with that said, I'll just kind of go through some of the comments I heard this evening. Mr. Tobin, I'd ask if you could send some of the information with respect to all of us at North that you had brought up, if you can forward those documents or information to the council. We, I'd certainly greatly appreciate it. Mr. Regan, you know, certainly thank you for your, your comments this evening and your interest in making Groton a place for, you know, for business. You know, you had mentioned that your family started a shopping plaza some 60, 70 years ago. And, you know, what we've seen in the last few years is a greater interest in, in that being in what they call downtown Groton, a greater interest to see if there could be mixed-use development and housing down there. And so I would say that probably the most important economic development project Groton could have or see in the next 50 years will be what happens down in your neck of the woods there. And certainly hope that we can be a partner to you in that effort. Mr. Stever has worked with the Planning and Zoning Commission to designate that area as a transit-oriented.
What's your point of order?
We're supposed to be discussing what was said in citizens petition, not about the other property that Mr. Regan currently owns or the family owns about that.
Well, he, absolutely.
He brought that up, but you were focusing on the data center.
Thank you. And I was going to get to that.
Just, Mr. Council Bumgarden, just make sure your mark.
Point's finished. So, thank you again, Mr. Regan. Mr. Stever, I'd agree. At this point, we need to hit the pause button. There, we're getting too many emails with respect to litigation, with respect to sound attenuation, with respect to environmental quality, with respect to whether or not an MOU for, you know, PLA MOU will actually carry weight, because it's not a legal document. You know, a commitment is certainly important on the council. I've continuously called for project labor agreements for, for many local projects, including our schools. So I am very much in favor and supportive of ensuring that our local labor works on projects. But with that said, if it's so important, it needs to be codified in our, in our host fee agreement. And it is not at this point, and I would certainly like to see that language included should.
Point of order.
Agreement come to the table. Mr. Mayor, I've been point of order twice, and I certainly have a lot more to get through.
Right. Let me, let me just grab the floor here for a second. Can you state your point of order?
This is a second counselor who is now discussing their opinion. It's basically an opinion-based expression standing on a topic of data centers. It is not on our agenda tonight, and if we get into deliberations on this without it being in our agenda, it will be an FOIA violation, which if it already is not, is as it is right now where we stand.
Okay. So it is my interpretation that counselors can respond to what was stated from the public in this section of the meeting. The FOI is if we deliberate and debate amongst ourselves, which we are not doing. He's simply just responding. If I'm incorrect, I'd like to hear the opinions of the clerk.
Sure. Well, it's not a matter of incorrect. You mean, there's been past practices, and I certainly respect all that. But if you, you know, if you adopt rules and you run by rules, then your rules state under Citizens Petition Rule 11, "Citizens' petitions shall be accepted as presented. There shall be no questions or cross-examination by members of councils except for questions necessary to clarify the citizen's intent."
So, so you don't believe that they can respond?
Point of clarification.
Hold on. Let me just, okay. So there should be no responses to?
It's, it's page 11.
A lot more to get through.
Point of clarification.
I read your rule.
Okay. Okay. What's your point of clarification?
Here we are again. What's good for one is not good for all on certain days. I've been up here now, this is my second elected term, and prior to that, I was appointed. And it seems sometimes that we change it as we go, and the very last.
My point of order is not debatable.
Let me finish.
My point of order has not been held upon, and it's not debatable. I have the floor. I am the one who had the floor.
I was recognized for my point of clarification, correct? My point of order has not had a ruling.
All right, we're going to take a, we're going to take a five-minute recess. We'll be back at 8:33.
Back from recess at eight forty-three. We're moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar on the agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will take place unless cause-
Wait, wait. We were not allowed to respond to citizens' petitions and I didn't get a ruling on your response to my point of order.
We are skipping? No, I have the floor. I have the floor. We are moving on to the consent calendar.
I understand the point of clarification.
Unless cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to adopt. I make a motion to move the consent calendar consisting of various appointments and reappointments December to February, special trust fund contributions February, February first twenty-two minutes, so moved.
Second, Borlon.
Moved by Melendez, second by Borlon. Are there any discussions?
I have a question.
What's your question?
There was the appointment reappointment meeting and for full transparency, I was wondering if the town clerk could explain why there was so much confusion over the endorsement from the Groton Democrat Town Committee.
Mayor, do you want me to respond or?
If you'd like.
Oh, okay. Well, I think that the chairman got it all straightened up, but there was some miscommunication shared with the appointments committee prematurely, but I believe that everything's back on track. So, that's about it. Unless you went blow-by-blow and I can send that to you.
Thank you.
Counselor Cassieri?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor. I believe our ad hoc committees were not voted on during that meeting.
Right.
What is the process going to be for that?
So, I've spoken with the chairman of the personal appointments and they will be voting on it at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Just a comment on that. I know the mayor has a few additions as well to that list, just some ad hocks that maybe, I think, case in point, the long-term recovery meeting, or long-term recovery committee, and I believe a few others. But yes, that will be acted on at our next personal appointments committee meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. See no further discussion. I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimously nine. In favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Communication and reports. Counselor Cassieri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday, I attended the public presentation regarding the data center host fee agreement with Any Edge here at Thrive fifty-five, which was moderated by the Economic and Conservation Commissions. Thank you to members of our community who came to that presentation or participated from home. Yesterday, I attended tours at the Groton Public Library here at Thrive fifty-five and the Spicer House. Thank you to Director Mealy, Assistant Director Spellman, Director Berry, Mary Jo Riley, and Town Manager Burt for those tours. I also watched the February seventeenth Traffic Authority meeting. I brought up a hazardous traffic situation on Oslo Street in January during school pickup and drop-off times on the dead-end road leading to Northeast Academy. I just want to thank the Traffic Authority for coming up with a solution that will hopefully remedy a lot of those issues. And for those who were concerned, there will be no parking signs placed on Oslo Street on both sides of the street during the hours of pickup and drop-off times. I also received various communications regarding the data center, issues in downtown Mystic, West Mystic Avenue traffic concerns, Oslo Street, Complete Streets, ARPA Money, and MOSA. Thank you.
Counselor Parker?
I received the same concerns Counselor Cassieri received via email. I've also attended a couple of tours. I was unable to present at the last meeting about the tours and participate in Super Bowl, which was a well-attended event, and it was fun. And thank you to Thrive fifty-five and all volunteers for participating. I did the TVCCA meeting. They are still accepting energy assistance applications. So, as of February ninth, they had over seven thousand eight hundred, but when we had our meeting, they were closer to eight thousand two hundred. And it's going up to May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, so please, if you need energy assistance, please apply through TVCCA. Volunteer income tax program, it has started. If you need assistance with your taxes, please check out the TVCCA site. I will also share the flyer on, hopefully I can get it to the town and they can post it for us. They're continuing looking at Central Avenue and seeing what they can do for the process to upgrade the buildings there. We had discussion about that. We talked about community service block grant program and what the upcoming activities are going to be, and they've been reaching out to different state legislators to make sure, ensure that they're gonna get everything that they need. They're also going to receive ARPA funding to assist with the programs that they currently have and all other little learners, the Meals on Wheels programs, everything's starting back up. They're still looking at the face masks there, so I just wanted to give that report. What else? I did take a tour of the library with Counselor Cassieri and some others, and thank everyone for doing everything that they do for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Franco.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. I think the volunteer income tax assistance is very popular in our community, very, very popular. Thursday, I attended the data center public presentation, and this past weekend, on Friday and Saturday, I went out knocking doors on Flanders Road. I've talked to many neighbors in that community to listen to their concerns and wanted to hear what they had to say. And due to that, I have set up a coffee with the counselors, which will be on March fifth, this Saturday, at ten a.m. at the library. And Counselors Cassieri, Jones, the Mayor Melendez, and the Town Manager Burt will be in attendance. And it would be, my goal is to specifically speak to the neighbors of Flanders Road in that area, people that would be impacted by this, and have a conversation. I also received much correspondence related to different topics around Groton, including the data center. Thank you.
Counselor Borlon?
Thank you. I, too, received a lot of the same correspondence that other counselors have already stated. The coffee with the counselors, just for full disclosure, I should think it should be that only four can go, so, you know, the person organizing it invited certain counselors, so if the public decides to go and other counselors are not there, it's not for lack of interest. It's my understanding, if I have a, just wanted to check with Mr. Burt, we only can have four or ten because of a quorum? Is that, like, we can't have, it would be a meeting?
That's my understanding, but let me just double check.
Yeah, because the offer wasn't open to everyone, so it's, it was only select counselors.
I checked because it might be that you could be there but not speak, but let me just look at-
So, if that could be sent to us in an email, because that has not been yet.
Point of clarification?
What's your point of clarification?
It is my understanding that we don't have to have permission from anybody to have a coffee with the counselors, and we could have two counselors show up, or we could have, you know, possibly up to four. It's not, it doesn't have to be an invitation to all counselors. It's something that, as an elected official, we have the right to do, and I have so chosen to do that. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, as I continue, it was not stated that I was saying that a counselor could not do that. I was just simply stating that only four were invited, so, and you do have your right, which I agree, because we've done them in the past. So, it was never stated that it shouldn't happen, or, but my question was, can other counselors attend and listen? Or, I was told at one point, you can only have so many because then it's considered a meeting. So, that's, that was my question, not to that. I also attended the Thursday data center presentation. Thank you for everyone who came out. Unfortunately, I did have to leave early to attend a concert at Fitch for, for band. I also attended the Fitch High School EC, EC fencing tournament this weekend, which was wonderful to watch, to see our students' place in our community. We had on the women's team a young lady who placed second out of ECCs, which was a huge accomplishment as a sophomore, so that was really exciting to watch happen. I also attended a Board of Ed meeting yesterday. I attended a long-term recovery meeting where we discussed different ways to broaden our outreach and reach out to certain things like the school and the library to try to maybe draw in more folks to fill out some of those surveys that they're currently taking in, so. What else do I have here? I think that's it. As I stated, communications via email, like everyone else received, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just go now real quick. I have the New London, the Crosstown Ferry, New London Lighthouse cruise. They just put it up, and it looks like they are beginning on June fourth. It's a Saturday and running through the beginning of October, and they have a website that you can look at the full schedule and the times. So, yeah, that's all I have. I also went on a bunch of tours. I want to thank the, the library and the Thrive fifty-five for hosting those. Counselor Westerville?
Thank you, Mr. Rayer. I apologize that I was unable to attend the meeting this past Thursday due to business requirements. However, I was able to go back and read through it, or not read through it, but look at it, review it, fast forward and rewind, so I got a lot of good information from that. I also received a number of emails and phone calls regarding Park Place Coastal Access, also the data centers, the town attorney process and selection, and also MOSA as well. Thank you very much.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, just want to thank again all those who attended this evening, and I apologize for, to residents that we were unable to complete our responses to your questions. Thank you.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also received the various emails from different residents on all the different issues. I recently did a ride-along with the police department.
Bring it closer. Is it on? Oh, there you go. It's on now.
So, I did a ride-along recently with the Groton Police Department, which was very enlightening and an interesting experience to do. We were able to cover a full range of policing activities during the ride, so just huge compliment to the training and professionalism of our police. They just do an amazing job, and the officer that I was with was only twenty-five years old, was one of the calmest, collected individuals I think I've ever met. If I think about where I was at twenty-five, it was nowhere near where he was. We really enjoyed the library, Thrive fifty-five, and the Spicer House tours last night. It did, there was, thank you to all the town employees who came up for that. I have continued to do the food bank at St. John's in the city. Huge thank you to United Way and Groton Utilities for hosting that. It's just becoming one of my things, I think it's the best thing I do as a counselor, the best thing I do in the world. We did a data center presentation last night, and then just in trying to learn more about the data center, I've spent the last two days, seven miles of walking, climbing all over and up and down Holstein property. We had permission from the owner. We walked through town property, Holstein property, and Groton Open Space property, and have crossed a lot of streams and water and climbed over rocks, and it's been just a very interesting, fascinating place to walk around, some beautiful property, and it's just worth everybody going in there and taking a look at it. So, that's what I've learned much each other in the last two days.
Thank you. Counselor McBride?
Thank you, Mayor. In addition to everyone else, I've received the same emails on various topics that everybody else has. I also attended the data center for the majority of the presentation last week. Did have to leave due to a personal, a personal situation, but did watch the remaining interesting ending on the YouTube, on the YouTube setting. So, and I just really want to appreciate everybody's comments, both for that Thursday presentation as well as tonight. Great comments, and I'm just glad that everybody's so involved in asking the questions to give us information, so thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Clerk Lorette R.T.M.
Okay, the R.T.M. So, they've been working on their rules, which is always a fun measure, and they do have that coming up on their agenda next week, that'd be the ninth. They'll be meeting here at the senior center. It's their new meeting hour, which is seven o'clock. They changed their schedule last week, I mean, last month, excuse me. The body wanted to meet at seven o'clock instead of seven-thirty, so that's what we'll be, we'll be here, in this building. The, clerk of the council.
Clerk of the council.
I attended Personnel and Appointments Committee, and I'm working with the town manager's office and the lieutenant governor on organizing Korean and Vietnam War veterans ceremonies. Lieutenant Governor Bysowitz started this process of World War, I think, I don't think she did World War I, but World War II veteran, she, when she was Secretary of the State, and COVID kind of stopped everything when she was lieutenant governor, when she became, so now she's starting it back up again. So, we're working on that, and we'll have dates for you soon.
Thank you. Town manager?
Good evening. For those of you who didn't see the presentation for the public, just to let you know that we do have that video on YouTube. You could go to the town website, and there is a pop-up where you could go through there to get to it, to just so everybody knows. Public work, Greg Hanover and I met with the Groton Housing Authorities, some of them. They have some sewer issues going, so we're gonna see what we can do to use our cameras to pinpoint issues and see what, they are not town sewers, but we're gonna see what we can do to help out. Sewer lines, I should say. A reminder, this Thursday is the Mystic Ed Center beginning of the mediation. We have Thursday and Friday booked, though I don't think it'll take both days, but we do have both days booked. I did see, it was said to me that Representative Conley and Dela Cruz did introduce a bill, House Bill five oh five, five zero five-five for funding, bond funding for TVCCA for their building, so that was introduced, so that's good, and hopefully that goes somewhere. And it was mentioned earlier, the River-
Avenue building?
What's that?
It's at the Central Avenue.
Yeah, it was mentioned earlier, the Riverview Avenue. It's not resolved yet, but we're making progress, so we're continuing on. But we have made a lot of progress, and we were asked before, too, where those rocks out there came from. We do believe what initially looked like their property, but now we think it's their property. We think we know where the rocks came from, and we intended to move them last Friday with the snow hit, so we'll be moving them any day now. They, they think they're a little bit frozen, and they're giving a couple of days to thaw, but those will be moved back. There's a spot kind of near the power pole where those goes, you know, so. And, oh, for the tour, for the tenth, for the, for the human services, which is our last one, is, I forget who's going, but is anybody interested in seeing the Javas Smith House that night, too, since it's a short one that night? If there is, we'll add that on, so. And that is all I have.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any department? Oh, you got a question. Counselor Borlon?
Thank you. I had a question for the clerk regarding the World War II. Is that just for Groton and town and city, or is it just all of New London County? Is that just for Grattan and town and city, or is it just all of New London County, or?
No, it's the whole town, so, including the city, yeah. And it's, it was Korean War and Vietnam War. I have a list that I have to go through. Most, most, well, not I should say most, a lot of veterans will put their discharge papers on our land records. It's free of charge for preservation. And also, if they qualify for reduction in property tax, they have to do that. So that's a natural place to look for veterans, is my office. I'm finding that a lot of people probably don't know that they can do this. So it'll be a twofold. They'll be recognized, and we'll register their DD214s.
We'll also run the list by VFW and those organizations to try to see, make sure we caught them all.
And then my other question was for the town manager. At the long-term recovery meeting, it was talked about the money that we had allocated to help, you know, give some, you know, instant relief to Human Service Department. And it was stated the applications had not been made yet to start. Has there been any movement on that so that we could get that going, so people could start applying?
It's not there yet, but Marge Fundulis, the director, has put a draft together. Cindy has to review that draft. However, she had something due to this date at the end of the day yesterday that took the entire week last week to work on. So she's been just full out. She's got a big waiting list, so we're trying to get that through that. But she's got to sign off on anything before we can do it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was coming.
Yeah, that's a priority.
Was approved as a rush thing, and it should start to come to fruition, so thank you.
And we don't have any department heads, do we?
No.
Okay. All right, I don't have anything for committee of the whole, personal appointments?
Yep. We just voted on the consent calendar, approving various boards and various members of the boards in commission. Next meeting, as we discussed, will be vetting some of the police, citizen and police committee members, as well as confirming the mayor's appointments for ad hoc committees that all of us will be serving on. Just a note, last meeting, we obviously got through a lot of appointments. But I think so far in our two months, we've managed to fill a lot of committees or boards that have had vacancies in some cases for more than a year. And certainly my goal to continue filling those folks with qualified and, you know, qualified residents. So if you are interested in serving on a board or commission, please submit your application to the clerk's office. And from there, you'll go through a few steps and a process in place that we have to properly vet your application. But please do so, and we very much appreciate those who do serve on our boards and commissions and continue wanting to serve. So nothing further to report.
Counsel Borlon?
I'm not sure if you have it now for the personal appointments. Is there a list left of what areas you're still needing to fill? Any, if you have that for the town, or do?
I know the clerk regularly updates that list, but if she wants to chime in, she's more than welcome to.
Yeah, we keep a running list. It's called vacancies. We have it posted physically outside, but it's also posted on our town website. It's not, you know, it's not that easy to find, is it? No, it's under government, and then you look at boards and commissions, and you'll see vacancies. You also see the town register, which has everything in there on it, as far as many of the departments, all of our boards and commission members and their addresses. At least sometimes we have more information than that, and also regional boards and commissions. So if people are interested in what regional boards and commissions we have.
I just wanted to check, but I think it'd be great if we could, I'm not sure if I have to send it as a referral, but it'd be great to report at the town council meeting what our vacancies are every time that we meet. I think it just would be a good way to kind of, just kind of drive it home for the people who don't get to see it. So I'll ask, but if, under the clerk, if, you know, if we're able to announce those each meeting, it'd be really awesome to kind of make sure that the community could hear which ones are, and it's on the record, you know, for people who watch this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Rules committee?
I have a question.
Counsel Franco?
At the personnel and appointments meeting, will the, the people that are applying, will they be getting called for interviews?
Yes, so did, you may or may not have attended the personnel appointment, I believe you did. And we had discussed that. We were going to make it standard practice where folks who do apply would be invited per the policy by the town clerk.
Thank you.
Rules, Rules Committee?
We had our meeting on February 15, 2022, and we have forwarded, it is as an agenda item tonight, which is under 2022-13 to this, for the town council to decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Borlon?
Thank you. As a person who was on the Rules Committee, once again, my opinion, I think we were charged with the task to handle that in the committee. And I feel that that's where it belongs. I think unfortunately, to be able to do this at the time that it needs, we would have to allot a large amount of time to work through that in great detail that we're obviously not going to have here. And I think that that's what the council was charged with. My hopes with the, with the Rules Committee was to make sure that we.
Can I just take the floor here real quick, one second? This is really just to ask the chair questions about their report?
I also serve on it, and I just wanted to speak to that. No?
Right.
You don't want to, that's fine.
No, you just asked the.
I just asked Andre a question about that, and I'm asking my question. So is this the proper place to move it back when it's, we're charged with making decision? I think no matter who's on that Rules Committee, all opinions and sides, since the council votes on it in the end, it should all be added in the final report. So I just don't, I just don't agree with it coming back to the council. I'm interested to see when we get to that item, how we're going to handle that, is all.
Yeah, I think it's here just because the Rules Committee voted to bring it here, so.
Right, and again, I did not vote for that. Thank you.
Public Safety Committee, I don't believe you guys have had a meeting yet, and I'm not even sure you have an agenda item yet, but.
That's correct. No referrals made, no meetings, no recording.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on to new business.
I have a question.
Counsel Franco?
For the Public Safety Committee, a request was sent by, out by the town manager for the Safety Committee to set up a fire district tax amount for, if we receive agreements, and have that in writing between, I believe it's Quanten Bridge Fire Department and the town. And can we set that up? At the next meeting?
Yes, thank you. I'll look into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, on to new business. 2022-93, town attorney appointment can be found on page 36. I make a motion recommending a resolution appointing the town attorney. Whereas the town council has considered the needs of the town for legal advice, the nature of the litigation currently underway, and the cost and quality of the legal services now being provided, now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to Town Charter, Section 8.2.1, Eileen Duggan of the firm, Sussman Shapiro, Wool Brennan Gray and Greenberg PC, is hereby appointed town attorney to exercise all powers and duties of that office until her successor shall be appointed and qualified, and that the following attorneys from Sussman Shapiro may assist Attorney Duggan in carrying out her duties. Robert Avina, Raymond Bearbolt, James Berryman, Michael Blanchard, Eric Callahan, Michael Carey, Richard Cody, Jack Collins, Jeanette Dostie, Brian Fiengo, Theodore Hyzer, Christie Kelly, Nicholas Keppel, Robert Kevill, Laura Raymond, and Kyle Zendra. So moved.
Second, Casiri.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Jones. Any discussion? Counsel Borlon?
Thank you. You know, again, we discussed this, so I, I feel that, you know, the community had spoken, wanted more due diligence, and is it possible that a, an addition can be added here? I think a compromising position would be a way to, a compromise would be to have it set up where if we're going under litigation for certain things, properties, under our current town attorney. And we probably should have something, which I did see in other towns. They had a protection clause in there where, for example, if something went to litigation and it was under this current attorney, which can happen at no fault of them, that they would then seek other representation because if there was possibly an error made, I'm not saying any has been, I'm just simply stating if an error was to be made or something we were found at fault, that the town then would then go out to seek an attorney for whatever, if it was property, if it was, you know, related to whatever the matter was. So I wanted to ask John, what is our current process with that? Because I think the concern, or what I heard from the community is, it seems a little bit, having another attorney step in to oversee a matter once this current attorney's been taking the litigation for something, you know, doesn't really allow, you know, they, they're going to speak on behalf of themselves. And so people, you know, have stated, well, maybe the amendment is not to replace the current attorneys, but have it written as such that we allow for other attorneys, or we say that we will seek other attorneys in the event that there's a judgment that we need another opinion on, or to remove it from this particular attorney company and to send it to another. So I just wanted to check, what is our current process? Because that's not stated in here, and I think, you know, I think it's really important to make sure that when we approve this, this motion states this company, but it doesn't really go into the detail of how we are going to handle things when we have litigations and things like that.
It happens all the time. I often get second opinions. Yeah, very common.
So you just get a second opinion, but you do not have the other attorney take over the case when it's?
I'd like to if I wanted, however, I've never seen the need for it.
Right, and so wouldn't it be appropriate, wouldn't it help to address some of the concerns, to add that in here in a way that, that would allow for people to feel that? Because it should say, I mean, I looked at some other resolutions that, for other towns, and they have it stated in here, where they have added in, we will seek other attorneys that are qualified. Again, we did not select those other attorneys as it was stated because they didn't have the qualification and all of the municipal needs of our attorneys. But there are other qualified attorneys that individually represent land and other things that we could bring in to kind of oversee and/or maybe we might feel that we want to move that case with them in particular. So I'm just curious as to how we can improve this document.
I'd be very against that because once, the town attorneys are the ones that represent us in lawsuits, and you don't want to take them out of the picture unless there was an extreme reason. And we could do that anytime we want to, but I recommend highly against that.
And, and I just, and your reason would just be because you want to keep the same one on, or?
Because they end up representing us when we get sued, so. Town attorney, that's what their job is. I don't, again, if some weird thing, I've never heard of it happening ever, that that would be needed. But if it was, we would just do it. If we saw a conflict, they would tell us if there was a conflict. Actually, I had something recently where they had a conflict of interest, just not a lawsuit, but on some, and they, because they'd represented somebody before, so we just had somebody else handle it outside of the firm.
Right. I just think it would be a way that, you know, you maybe consult with the council and seek, you know, other attorneys' opinions if there was a conflict on, on certain levels. But I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
All right, see no other discussion. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions?
Aye.
All right, so that carries six in favor, two opposed, Borlon, Baumgartner, and one abstaining, Westerveld. On to 2022-13-2, Town Council 33rd Rules and Procedures can be found on page 37. I recommend a resolution adopting.
Mr. Mayor, there's, and then whereas, it should be February 15, not the 22nd.
Thank you. I recommend a resolution adopting rules for the 33rd Town Council. Whereas at the February 15, 2022 Temporary Town Council Rules and Procedures Committee meeting, the committee recommended approval to the Town Council of the 32nd Town Council Rules adopted on December 1, 2020. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council adopts the rules and procedures of the 33rd Town Council attached said rules to be effective immediately. So moved.
Second, Parker.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Parker. Counsel Borlon?
So are we adopting the rules, or we're going to take the rules off and review them?
We're adopting rules.
All right, so I just feel that that should not be the case. We were charged with reviewing the rules and just sending the rules forward from the previous year and just adopting them without going through them in their entirety is not what we were, we were charged to go through the rules. Also, we made a amendment to those rules that we're currently acting on under. And this current rule would still have all of these time restraints that people, you know, did not want. So I think we, we need to discuss this. So this motion, what we're doing today is just bypassing it completely, not having the discussion, and going through it through its due diligence. So I think this should be an agenda item for discussion, not to adopt the, the rules before. So I just would like some explanation on that.
It went to the committee, the Rules Committee. The Rules Committee decided to approve the 32nd Town Council rules and adopt them as the 33rd Town Council rules.
That wasn't my understanding of the meeting. My understanding was that the, the motion was, and once again, I was not in support of it coming back, but it was being sent to the council. And my understanding was that it was being sent to the council to be reviewed.
This is the council.
Right, but we're, we're not going to have time tonight to review. Are we going to go through this whole rules tonight, then?
You mean committee of the whole, you wanted to go back?
Correct. It should go back. It should be reviewed. This is not something that we should be voting on tonight. It never hit the proper channels.
Well, it went through the Rules Committee, and then when it passed through Rules Committee, it comes to the council.
So I guess I would charge the council tonight, then, to remember that this was not fully a vetted document. It did not fully go through in its entirety. I was one of the, only opposer of it. And I think there's no document that's submitted that has any of the language here of the stuff that we had started to work on, as well as, I think, all three sides, no matter where you stand, should be in the document. And this has not been, you know, really worked through. And I think the council, then, if it's going to come back to the council, then it should be the work of the council, then, to work through the forms and look at the rules in its entirety and make sure that we're properly going through this. To just vote this through as written with no review, not even a first read, would be very unpractical. So I would like to refer this to one of our working meetings, which this is not, to have this reviewed. So. Refer to a cow.
Well, it already went through committee. That's, it's, it went through the Rules Committee. The, it was set up to look at these rules, and they recommended that the 32nd rules was the appropriate way to go forward. So now it's our decision whether we agree, we can adopt, we can amend, we can do what we want to do. But it already went through committee, and now it's here.
Right, and I'm stating that that's, I think, we did, for full disclosure, as it should be stated, we did not finish the whole, every line on this. We stopped at a certain point, and then the document was pushed forward. So we didn't even get past like number, I don't even remember now, seven or eight. We did not finish the whole up to Rule 14. We didn't review that and decide, yes, these rules are perfectly written, let's adopt these. We never got through them. So there hasn't been a full look at these yet in a group that's working on it. And I think our council should take the time, if we choose to adopt this, that's your guys' decision. But we should bring it to a working meeting where we can go through them line by line and submit concerns and address some of the, the errors that are in here, and definitely look at the time restraints and restrictions on folks. I'll stop for now. Thank you.
Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes, before I opine on the rules, just like a clarification from the clerk. Yes. Before I opine on the rules, just like a clarification from the clerk, what is the proper, so should we propose an amendment this evening? What would, what are the proper procedures about going about that?
Okay, so you have a motion on the floor to adopt these rules from the committee, from the, right? So the, you could make an amendment to that motion on the floor to change something in the rules and to adopt that rule. You know, it's the only way you can, we, it's really the only way you can get through this is to put amendments in from here, I think.
So say if we were to do a strike-all amendment, and we were to vote to approve that amendment, would the original motion then stand for the vote, or would you be voting on?
You would, you have to adopt the, you have to adopt the amendment, and then adopt the new rules as amended.
All right. So with that, I will propose an amendment. I would like to strike section, so, under D, debate and decorum, Section 4. At council meetings, councilors are limited to two turns of three minutes, each on any question. They may not speak a second time until all other councilors have had the opportunity to speak. The same limits apply to discussion on each amendment. Merely asking a simple, quick question or making a brief suggestion is not counted as speaking in debate. I'd like to strike that entire section. So moved.
Second, Bordelon.
Actually, if I can rescind that, strike Sections D4 and D5. So moved.
Second, Bordelon. Point of clarification. If we're going to go through it, then we should do our work, then. Maybe we should start with Rule 1. And I like Counselor Baumgartner's amendment, and that, you know, is something that got put forward. But I think if we're going to adopt this, we need to go line by line. We should start with Rule 1.
Point of order.
And go through it.
What's your point of order?
This is not a point of clarification.
My point of, is clarifying, is it, would it be appropriate to go through it line by line?
Well, we, we have the whole rules that the Rules Committee sent to us, so you could just amend anything that you want to amend.
Correct. But in the past, when we've pulled things through, we've said, okay, Rule 1, anything here, Rule 2, nothing, like, go down it in a fashion as you run the meeting.
Right. But that's what happened at, in committee. So we have...
We did not make it through the whole document, so it was never reviewed for that first time.
I understand. But the whole document was approved by the Rules Committee to be here in front of us today. So if there is amendments that you'd like to make, you can make.
Could you just repeat your amendment?
Yes. Under Rule 8, Section D, Number 4, or Roman Number 04, and Roman Number 05. Strike-all. May I opine?
Sure.
Thank you. One of the first items of business that our council took after getting sworn in as the 33rd Council was obviously the mayoral vote, but also approving the temporary rules. We had voted that evening to strip speaking limits, I believe, near unanimously. I think there was a consensus at the time that previous council meetings, folks were not afforded the due diligence to be able to ask questions. And in some cases, the time restraints created a bit of friction, especially during very heated and spirited discussions about importance, matters of importance to our community. While our council meetings, you know, while we certainly won't always agree on the issues, I do believe in, in all seriousness, that the decorum in the past few months have been superb. I believe we've been able to function well. We can communicate. And the, not having the speaking limits, I think, have been able to, afforded everyone the opportunity to really dive deep into the issues. While we can certainly all do better about, you know, being cognizant of how much we speak, I do think that it would create a lot more friction, should we go back into the direction of having speaking limits, literally the same speaking limits that we had with the 32nd Council rule. So I would respectfully ask you all to reflect on that first vote you took, in stripping that language from our rules, and hope you support that, this amendment this evening. Thank you.
Counselor Cassieri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our Town Council rules are put in place so that we can be sure to effectively and efficiently do the people's business. Some rule suggestions may work well for other members of governing municipalities. We need rules that are going to ensure that these nine personalities have fair and equitable time to do our work for the people of Groton. One of the highlights of attending all of the town tours that have been provided to town councilors has been seeing firsthand how much our town staff loves, values, and is working for the betterment of our town, whether they live here or not. They care tremendously and with great enthusiasm. We should respect their time and their work for Groton. We should also value and respect each other's time. We have learned, in this council, that time management is an issue. Time limits ensure fair and equitable speaking time for all nine councilors. I know I can promise to come to these meetings prepared with questions, concise comments, and ready to make decisions. Organic conversations are simply councilors adjusting already well-thought-out questions and comments accordingly. Let's really start to exercise respect for one another and our staff. Let's choose to be better in the name of our constituents. Time limits are simply a tool to acknowledge and respect each other's valued time. Thank you.
Thank you. I can respect Counselor Cassieri's, you know, statements that she stated. But one of the things that we heard is during a budget meeting, if you only have two chances to speak, a lot of things should be organic in nature. And it was stated to speak only twice and email your concerns. Things should be done above the board. When the, when the agenda comes out, there are things that come up way after, and I think a lot of our questions should be before the public. And then sometimes, a person or counselor may respond to something in a way that you might have came tonight, or a night, ready to make a decision on something, but you might have heard from somebody else on a different matter or whatever that's going on that you feel strongly about. And, you know, you should be open to make decisions in real time. Allowing only limited time to speak is not what we were elected to do. And I don't think it's a disrespect to the staff members or time. When you're starting to limit government process and democracy for to happen, then, then what are we here for? So putting time restraints on things does not allow the opportunity and the transparency and the appropriate time to be given. Sometimes, some people up here don't have any comments on anything, and that's fine and respected. Other times, other people do. For the people who talk maybe more, some people might, you know, want to hear more from, from everybody, but everyone has a right, just because you might not speak as much, meaning whoever, you have the opportunity. And so to stand out as being someone who does speak, I openly admit that, absolutely I do. And a lot of good deliberation has happened here when you have the chance to ask the questions. And you should, because this is where it should happen. When we're voting on the town budget, having limitations on that only cripples the counselor's ability to effectively govern. These are things I heard under the last election that people said they didn't like. Tonight, people were, did not like the limitations there. They also don't like in here, which I'd like to change, once a month, being able to speak. Not everybody can make it on that night. We should have a much more open, transparent government. If there's issues or concerns in ways that we can limit things, I'm open to suggestions, but I do not think putting limitations on, on stuff really fixes the problem. You create this, this, you know, kind of be quiet council, and it, it doesn't represent well to the community. So I encourage us, I have all of my, my notes here from all my amended suggestions, so I will, I'll speak to the mayor. Would you, would you like me to read all of these amendments as one movement, or would you like me to read them one by one? How should I then present my amendments to the floor?
You have an amendment on the floor?
Yeah, we have, we have an amendment on the floor.
I know, I understand that. But I just think that this is, once again, not the proper way to truly give this document the importance that it deserves to our community. In the end, we might end up with time restraints, if that's the majority out here. But we should give it the deliberate process to go line by line, 14 lines, rule by rule, and go through it. As a person who served in the Rules Committee, we did not make it all the way through the document. It was stopped and said, we'll move it forward to the council. So the council has a decision today to decide to bring this back up and delay it, and postpone this item completely. That's what I would recommend. Once again, as we learn in this town, if we act too quickly, we, we create other problems. So I say let's postpone this item to a later date, continue under the rules that we're currently on, and that way, everybody can make time, and we can submit and discuss a line by line. But I do not think in this way, unless you guys want to stay and go, because I have a bunch of amendments, I have, and I have the right to do that tonight, because it is the rules that are going to be permanent. We should give this the proper time. So whatever side you stand on is fine, but then let's give it the right process to do such. So there's amendment on the floor, so I can't do that now. But I would like to, at some point, come back, and I'd like to postpone this. I looked at the town clerk. Do I postpone it to a later date, to the next council? Would that be the most effective way to postpone it?
Your rules are always available for amendments.
Yep.
It's, it's not, it's, you know, it's, you adopt something, and then you can always make a...
Right. But the current standing rules that we have...
I mean, normally what would happen, if you have, if you want to make a rule change, the mayor would refer it to the Rules Committee.
Right. The current rules that we currently have were only changed slightly for temporary rules, so we could stay under that, and give us another round at these rules at a proper council meeting, where we have the time and the time is allowed on the agenda for us to go through it. So, yes, they can be, but I think we need to work through this document as a team, as stated, as a working group. And that's if the time is not here on the agenda that I say. So I think it'd be careless to move it forward. Thank you.
Counselor Franco?
Thank you. These rules have been vetted. Is this one? Here. Thank you, appreciate that. These rules have been vetted. They were used by the last Town Council. They have been used by our council. The only difference is the time limits are being put back in place. I was, if you all recall, not in favor of the time limits. I wanted them removed. I voted to remove them. Very happy to remove them. But now, since we have done that, they, I believe they need to go back in. It has been proven time and time again at our council meetings, that time management is an issue. Counselor, there was a topic that we spoke for two hours. One counselor spoke for 15 minutes out of two hours, and repeated themselves five times. This was not bringing new information to the floor. This was being repetitive. This was, in my viewpoint, not a very good use of time management. There are people on this council that, as was said by Counselor Bordelon, may not speak as much as others. Maybe some people aren't speaking because there's so much time being taken by other councilors speaking. And it is, I just personally think, putting back the time limits is fair and equitable, and will give everybody a chance to speak with the same amount of time, without certain councilors maybe taking majority of the time. So I can back this from what I have seen and what I have, what I have definitely heard from constituents that do watch our meetings. And, thank you.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes. To follow up on Counselor Bordelon's point, and I think, in a way, clerk had explained this, ultimately, whatever we adopt tonight, yes, it will, the document will stand as our 33rd Council rules, but at any point, a counselor can make a referral to the Rules Committee to, you know, make an adjustment, and the Rules Committee can then vet that, you know, that amendment or proposal, and include it in that, you know, bring it to the council for approval. And so now I believe the Temporary Rules Committee will cease to exist, so there will be a Standing Rules Committee. And so hopefully, that there's an opportunity where the council can do that. And so, pardon my rationale for proposing the existing amendment. I'm not proposing any new language, simply asking the council to support removing an item that was placed into the document that we had two months ago, voted almost unanimously to strip from the rules. Thank you.
Counselor Bordelon?
It was stated that time, time limits would possibly make the meetings go faster. Under the last council, we had time limits, and we were here till 10, 10:30, 11, 12, not on budget nights, with those same time restraints. We still, I mean, we did have an outlier recently. But also, I think part of this is not the time. It's the information on the front end, in the packets, so that we can deliberate and ask the questions that we need. So I think, you know, it's more important to have as much information in our packets to answer those questions. That's how you help. But to say that people speak too much, and they ask too many questions, that's what we were set to do. So if there's stuff missing here, that's what, that should be. But, but anybody that's new up here, if you go back and watch the last year's meetings with the time restraints, the average time was 11, 10:30, and maybe some will say that the agendas were stacked too. That was another thing. So sometimes we also should look at our agendas in proportion, but with those time restraints, we were here. Look at the outliers. Look at the meetings. It did the same thing. So I don't see that as the fix. I think the fix is figuring out a way to construct these agendas with the proper information that we need, or more, to make sure that we can deliberate through it, but also condensing it and organizing it in a way. Like, for example, the town attorney and the data centers on one night. That would not be an agenda that I would arrange. That's two large issues packed in. The last agenda packet was 390-something pages. To tell me on a 390-something-page agenda that I get to talk for two turns at a few minutes, how am I really deliberating the process to the community? If I only spoke two times on 398 pages, I'm not doing my work on the items. So I asked the council to consider, look back at the old meetings. We were here. I was here. I came back because I wanted to do the work. And to say that it's not, to, to ask questions is not to be sensitive. We're doing what we're supposed to be doing. We're charged with. So what I'm saying is, I'm not saying that I don't agree with the majority of this. I'm asking that we take the time as a council to come together, and I can support Counselor Baumgartner's motion. I think, let's be respectful of that, and let's work together as a group, then. If that's an issue, then, let's work with the town manager and the mayor to figure out a way to, to make sure that we reconfigure our agenda, and load it with information that's going to propel us forward. Oftentimes, I leave with asking, I need this, or can I have that, or what's going on with this. Sometimes, it's not because, after I read the 390 pages, that I didn't send it forward. It's that sometimes it might be that Bruce Jones said something, or the mayor said something, and it triggers another question. By limiting that, you're not allowing that to happen. So I just encourage... So I just encourage that we do this, and I'll tell you, with the time restraints, we were still here. I mean, I don't know. I just think we need to give it the time. Thank you.
Counsel Parker?
Okay. Since some of this information comes from Robert's rules, and if everybody has their book, on page 366 of the new version of the 12th edition, it does have time limits within here, and it does say you may debate twice, hence why we put it back in. And at this point, I'm going to move, I would like to move the previous question, and so we can vote. I so move if I can.
Okay. So are you moving the amendments and the original motion?
I moved the previous question so we can take a vote, please.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. That is not debatable.
Clarification, is this on Andrea's motion?
Yeah, yeah. And then after that, we'll vote on the other one.
First we move.
We vote on his.
His first, then we vote. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We need to vote on calling the question, which needs six to be in favor. Then we will vote on Counsel Baumgartner's amendment, then we will vote on the entire document as amended or not amended. Okay. So this is to move the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, that carries six in favor, three opposed, Borlon, Baumgartner, and Westerveld, zero abstaining. So, okay, so we are now voting on the Counsel Baumgartner's amendment to strike the time limits. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll be abstaining. So that carries five in favor, three opposed, one abstaining, Melendez?
No, no, no.
No, he failed.
That fails. Three in favor, Borlon, Baumgartner, Westerveld, five opposed, one abstaining, Melendez. So we will be voting on the 32nd rules without being amended to adopt them as the 33rd rules. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, that carries six in favor, three opposed, Borlon, Baumgartner, Westerveld, zero abstaining. Public hearing can be found on page 47.
Mr. Mayor, I'll read it for you if you want.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adopt a resolution to schedule a public hearing for an affordable housing plan for April 5, 2022, and refer the plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Whereas the state of Connecticut requires that all municipalities have an affordable housing plan adopted prior to July 1, 2022, and whereas the town of Groton received a grant for $15,000 from the state of Connecticut to assist in the development of a town of Groton Affordable Housing Plan, and whereas the town formed an advisory committee to assist in the development of the plan and hired RKG and Associates to develop the plan based upon state requirements, public feedback, and existing data for Groton. And whereas to ensure that the plan was in line with public opinion, an Affordable Housing Advisory Committee was formed consisting of town council, RTM, and public members. And whereas it is recommended that the plan is referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review and input, it must be authorized via a public hearing of the town council. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby sets a public hearing for the Affordable Housing Plan for April 5, 2022, and refers the plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I so move.
Second, Parker?
Moved by Casiri, seconded by Parker. Discussion? Counsel Borlon?
Thank you. For the town manager, so the plan that was presented to us, and I know they had to do a short preview of it because there wasn't enough time, so we didn't, it wasn't presented as a full document to the council, even though I think it is up on the webpage now. Is that correct?
I'm sure it is, but we do have John Reiner with us.
So if it is, well, I think some of the concerns and things that were brought up there and whatever comes out of the public hearing, is that going to be added to the plan after, or what's the direction? So it's one thing to have the public hearing, but what's the plan with the information you gather from that based on the document that was already created? Because counselors had brought up suggestions that night and we did not go through the full slideshow. So I have trouble, I'm all for affordable housing, but I'm not for approving things that we didn't have fully presented to us. So now it's back to the council to vote. This is this problem that I see constantly for me, and this is where those questions that come up is, the presentation slideshow was up, we didn't go through the whole thing, and we should do that on the camera for the people. So now we're setting a public hearing, and I'm just, I'm curious as to counselors' questions that were brought up as well as what the public, where will that then be altered or amended into the document?
I'll let John reply. He's muted.
Can you unmute?
No, I mean, he's got himself muted.
No.
I know he's waiting on here.
John, I'm here. I couldn't hear you if you're on computer.
Yes. Did you hear the question?
Oh, okay, yes. I think there's a question, thank you. So what we're looking to do tonight is to get the public hearing scheduled after, if the public hearing, if we receive any additional comments from the public, and if the council then wants additional or any items within the plan itself changed, we need to know what that direction is, and that can be discussed after the public hearing. Many of the items that we did speak about at the last council meeting were more items of how we will actually implement the plan. I don't recall any policy changes or suggested changes to any of the recommendations in the plan itself, but if that's something that folks have individual concerns or items that they want changed within the plan, you know, some very specific comments would be helpful, and that's something that we brought up after we have the public hearing.
So I guess what I'm trying to say, there were some, from my notes, there were, I, one that comes to mind was one from Counsel McBride, maybe moving up, and he can correct me if I, because I don't have it in front of me, moving up the assistant for...
Rental assistance.
I'm sorry, rental.
Rental assistance.
Rental assistant, it was in like phase, a certain phase of the plan. So there were recommendations that night, and I didn't know if those would have to be voted on or added to the plan, but I thought that that's a great example of one that was presented that I thought was a great idea. Why is it in phase two or three? Why not move it up to an earlier phase?
Typically those thing, any changes are done at the public hearing. It should be brought back up, what the council wants changed.
So, so after the public hearing that night, there will be a discussion for the council to talk about any corrections we'd like made to that? That will be on the agenda?
Put it on record, and then it comes back in a cowl to discuss.
Okay, so, all right, so I just, any of those questions that were brought before us and anything that comes out of that I think should be vetted the proper time to be discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Baumgartner?
Yeah, just to summarize, the resolution states that, you know, whereas it is recommended that the plan is referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review and input, and must be authorized via a public hearing of the town council. So we will be, not only will we continue to have our input as shared, but the public will as well. So that should be included in the final document that we will ultimately adopt.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, that carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Mr. Burton?
For the next one, can I just mention something before you read a resolution?
Yep.
It's not substantive, but I'd like to recommend taking two things out. Under the definition of firefighter and the definition of police officer, it says employed member of a state or municipal, it says that on both of them, strike a state, on both, or see a member of a state or, so strike state or on both those. It doesn't matter because we already defined which departments, so it doesn't have an effect, but I think it's more clear, because someone did ask me, does this really apply to a, to this, to a state position?
Help me find that. Where is it?
Page 49, under the firefighter definition and under the police officer definition.
Okay, take out the two words, state and or.
A, C, yeah, state or on both those, yep, state or. So just read as a member of a municipal fire department and say it's a police, just to make it clear.
Okay. I can read this one. You sure? Yeah, thank you. Okay. Yep.
I just have a clarifying question regarding that, as, you know, once again was proposed tonight to just slash that out. Was it written that way because the state would allow, it could be written to include the state if they reside in the town of Groton? I just would like to know why we're cutting it. So if we're going to cut something...
There was nothing that said, there was no parameters. This was just in an earlier version before everything was defined. So just a leftover from earlier.
So I guess my question again is, can it be that the state, like a state trooper who resides in the town of Groton?
Not with the rest of the language in here. It still wouldn't be valid. You'd have to change other language in the ordinance. It's specific on who this applies to.
Okay, and I guess that draws me to the next question of that for clarifying, since we took that out, because when I read this packet and did my research on everything.
Okay, let me just get the motion on the floor.
Sure.
Okay, I recommend a motion to introduce the introduction of an ordinance to provide a tax abatement for real property for the surviving spouses of police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians that have fallen in the line of duty, be it ordained by the town council of the town of Groton. Abatement of property taxes for spouses of firefighters, emergency medical technicians, town of Groton police officers, Groton Long Point police officer, and city of Groton police officers who die on duty while in performance of their duties, a definitions. The following words, terms, and phrases when used in this section shall have the meanings ascribed to them in this section, except where the context clearly indicates a different meaning. Emergency medical technician, EMT, means any person who was certified as an emergency medical technician by the state of Connecticut Office of Emergency Medical Services performing EMT duties, full-time or part-time, for any valid ambulance service provider located within the geographical boundaries of the town of Groton. EMT duties means duties performed while traveling.
Point of clarification, I apologize to interrupt. What you just read, though, has state still in it. That's why I stopped, that I wanted to go through the full document again.
I stroke state or.
The definition.
The definitions there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do you really...
You just have to do the resolve, you don't need to read all of it.
Okay, good. Where is this?
And in the same, in those...
Just right at the end?
Right.
It's on page 51.
Point of clarification, so you said under firefighter, are we also doing it under emergency medical technician as well?
It's not under that one. It's only under firefighter and a police officer. And in those same definitions, they make it clear it's within the geographical boundary, so it would be not valid anyway, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're just doing the resolve?
Include that.
All right. Counsel Parker, do you want to read just the resolve then?
Okay.
Let me read it all to you, huh?
Be it further resolved that the town council will hold a public hearing on a tax abatement for real property for the surviving spouses of police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians that have fallen in the line of duty on April 5, 2022, at 6:30 PM at the Thrive 55+ Active Living Center at 102 Newtown Road, Groton, Connecticut. I so move.
Second, Casiri.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Casiri. Counsel Borlon?
Just a question that had come to me was, you have people that reside in the town of Groton, but they work as EMT in the fire station that's off-base, but they also support the town of Groton if there's a second bell or third bell. You know, would, would the naval base, non-enlisted that are serving, that do respond to EV for emergencies, but they're not hired by the town, are they covered in this?
It's not a town agency. It just has to be located within the boundaries of the town, not actual a town agency. So yes, if they had a home and were military personnel, I mean, but you'd have to have a home for it to apply anyways, because it's a tax abatement for real property.
Right, it doesn't, so, so if you were a firefighter working for the federal government on the naval base and owned a home in Groton, you would fall under this. If you were an emergency police officer on that base as a civilian, I know we're not doing military in this, but as a civilian...
Well, police officers, the council chose at the last meeting to define which departments the police officers would be part of, not for firefighters. It just says any valid fire department within the town, so.
Right. I'm sorry. So, so that's my thing, why I wanted to slow down and reread this. I think it's kind of, we should define military police that work for the military, who protect and serve, you know.
You're setting criteria.
Right, I understand that, but the document that we're setting forward for the public hearing is confusing. So it's one thing to have a public hearing, but again, the questions that come up, if you're sending a document that's going to raise them, this is why we need the time here. So, but I'm adding it now that that is a concern, the wording doesn't jive. So it specifies for police, the dot here, so I just wanted to see what suggestions we could do, because I think military police who are civilian that own a home in the town of Groton should qualify along with the emergency officials as well as firefighters, because I know one fire station is off-base and they do respond to EV and other town things if there's an emergency.
It would be a vote of the council, amendment and a vote of the council to change it.
So that would have to be done tonight?
If you want to do it then, but you can obviously do it after the public hearing.
Yeah, there'll be a public hearing, and then we'll get feedback, and then we vote on the...
But I, again, I think if we're going to...
And I kind of like to research a little bit too, just because...
Correct, that's why.
Before.
These are the concerns that were brought to me, that's why I'm bringing them forward. I think before we have a public hearing on a document, we should have what we're going to have in the document before, so they can review that. So this is the time now to make those changes and ask those questions, and these are the questions that were brought before me.
That was for the cowl time, and then after the public hearing is the time for making the changes and asking questions.
I'm sorry, say that again?
That's what the cowl was for, and then the next, tonight's not really what is meant for that, it's really now after the public hearing.
Right.
After the public hearing, you bring them up.
And I can respect that, but the question came after that night, and this is the first meeting I'm at that I can, you know, that concern that had come forward. So sometimes discussion can't happen then, and that's where I'm speaking about later things do come up. You shouldn't just bypass them because it could have happened then. This is where I have to stop it now.
I don't think we can add it tonight till I do a little research on it, till I look at it a little more.
So then, so are we ready to set a public hearing?
Yeah, we are, yep.
I mean, because if the document is unclear...
It's not unclear.
I'm saying, it's my opinion. I'm speaking on behalf of other constituents that have asked, that reached out to me that are military police and emergency personnel that reside and own a home in the town of Groton, that this would also affect.
All right.
I would just say that this has been looked at for years. I'd just say it's time to get at least to a public hearing.
All right, so that was three minutes, so we'll move on to Counsel Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. I believe military, active military and veterans get a tax reduction. I don't, don't quote me on that, but if we could check that, if they're military police, wouldn't they already get a reduction on that? And this is only in the line of duty death, so.
I don't know if they get...
And then is there something different from the military that they give to them at the same time? Because this is only dealing with military, and then we have to check with the state too. Thank you.
My point of clarification, I was not speaking about active-duty military, I was speaking about civilian police and civilian firefighters who serve on the base who are not active-duty.
Right.
Their law enforcement is comprised of a lot of civilian...
Point of order.
...as well as the fire department.
What's your point of order?
This is a statement and not a clarifying question.
Well, that's what I just want to ask.
Point of order. You do not have the floor.
Okay, that, yeah. A point of clarification, you would just ask a question like...
My point of clarification, as stated by Counsel Parker about the military, I can respect that, but my position of adding that or making sure it's clear...
No.
My clarifying question, John, is, is that the...
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
Counselor was not given the floor again.
So, so you can't like state your opinion on what someone said in a point of clarification? You would just say, you would ask a question?
Fine, that's fine. We don't have to be that technical. Clarifying question, John, the non-active-duty members that are civilian-ly, civilian-employed, they're not active-duty, that, that was my, so I just want to make sure when you're checking into this, I wasn't looking at active-duty members, I was looking at civilians that served as firefighters and military police.
The way it's currently written, the firefighters would be, however, the police were defined to... were defined, the council actually discussed that last time, it defined which departments it would cover.
Okay, thank you. Council Franco?
So this is becoming, this is to establish an order. Thank you. So this is to establish an ordinance, and as you can see from the next steps, it's pretty in-depth. It goes from March, basically to June. We basically have had one conversation about this at the COW meeting, and I would like for this to go to the Tax Abatement Committee that we're trying to form and have them review it as well, and to see if this is something that they also would refer as an ordinance and review it for us and make their recommendations on it. So I would like to make that a motion. Thank you.
Second, for discussion?
Okay, hold on, one second. I'm trying to, you're moving to do what?
I would like to send this to the Tax Abatement Committee that we're trying to form and have them review this. As you can see, it's a long process between March and June of everything that has to go through.
Yeah, I just make sure that the tax abatement, the Tax Abatement Committee that you've formed is for specific subjects, not angles that go, it's not what that committee is set up for. Remember?
Yeah, the seniors, disabled, and veterans, I do recall. And maybe we should send this to a committee or form a committee to review it. If we're having a committee review seniors, disabled, and veterans, I believe we should be having a committee probably review this. Because to create an ordinance is not as simple as just like voting on it. It's a very long process. There's advertising, there's money to be spent on this, and I just think that it should go to a committee for review first. But it's up to the council as a whole to decide. Thank you.
Council Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to encourage councilors tonight to just send this to the public hearing place tonight. I came pretty prepared with facts and statistics on the line of duty death in the state of Connecticut, so I hope you'll just all send it forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. This one.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, what are we voting on?
To move into committee.
No, public, oh, no.
No, no, that was not a motion.
I have a motion. I have a motion on the floor, and I'm seconded.
That motion, we can't send it to, to the Tax Abatement Study Committee?
No, I said to form a committee.
To form a committee?
No, I didn't hear a second.
I so, second.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't get that amendment. I didn't get that.
I'm not sure if that's a valid motion or not at this point.
It's not a specific way, you know, you got an ordinance in your way that.
I think you have to fail before you can refer it, because you can't change direction. So I think you have to first vote on it and then fail, and then you make a motion to refer it. I don't think.
So it's only come out of committee, it hasn't passed at the town council yet?
No. You're trying to send it to a public hearing.
But the motions on the floor are going one direction. You have to vote that down before you can make the referral to send it somewhere.
So the only motion we have on the floor is the original main motion?
Yes.
Okay.
And if that's the.
Okay. So all in favor of the original motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Franco?
That carries seven in favor, zero opposed, two abstaining, Franco, Bordelon.
Do we, oh, we do have one.
Yeah. It's 10 o'clock? Okay. Do we have consensus from the council to take on one more agenda item? Oh. No, we don't have any other agenda items. Other business? All right. So.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Casiri. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. There is other business still on there.
Abstentions? That carries eight in favor, one opposed, Bordelon, zero abstentions. We are adjourned at 10:07.